I'd like to call the Select Board meeting to order for Wednesday, November 19, 2025, at 6:30. Jim, do we have a need for non-public?
Mr. Chairman, we do. Two items, RSA 91A, three, Roman numeral, two lowercase a, employment.
Okay, consideration of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table those. I did not have any in the packet.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is public input. Limited three minutes per resident, 15 minutes in total. Anybody want to speak to us at this point?
I have emailed all of you about, I guess it's a week ago now, or not yet, a week. One of our representatives has resigned from District 7, Carroll County District 7, so we have an open seat in that spot. Tufton Borough on Monday voted that they are putting forth for a special election, and their town clerk has already submitted the letter. And I'm just here to ask you, other people circulated a petition. The petitioners aren't here tonight, so I'm just standing up for them, but there's 150 signatures they put together in just a few days asking for a special election, and that you would join Tufton Borough in reaching out to the Secretary of State, the Governor, and the Executive Council. Would one of you like these? Should I give them to you, Jim?
I hand it to John, and then I will take it from him and get to the clerk.
Okay, thank you.
So Dave? Dave?
Yes?
So, all it takes is one town to trip a special election. Where Tufton Borough has already asked for a special election, it's going to happen. And I believe that we should support it, because I don't think we should leave a position vacant from now until after the election in March.
You know, the election would have been in November. The next time that seat would have come out would have been November 2025.
Correct, you're right. So we don't want to leave it until next November.
Yep.
So I think we should support Tufton Borough, and I'm hoping that OSIP does also.
Yes?
Carol McMahon, I would also like to support Bobby's recommendation for a special election, because if the other towns are going to vote, we should be able to vote too.
Exactly.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was informed that this is in Pat's wheelhouse to work this through.
Just to clarify, the vote is by the Select Board, and then you instruct the town clerk to write the letter. But I also wanted to state that this, based on the number of days that were, as of today, 111 days away, and based on what the rules are for a special election, this would allow all three towns to have the special election at town meeting. So it's not forcing our town to actually have an extra day where we're really, where it's costing us a lot of money. It would fall on town meeting day.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Pinio, but if we had two of a party, we would probably have to have a primary. I would like to know the timeline. I support it, but I want to know what happens if we have, like, two independents, or two Democrats, or two Republican, how much time we need and an outline, and I think that's important.
So, as I said, it is a March election, and there is no primaries for a special election. It's everybody just runs, and the person with majority...
Well, I would like him to get us the statute so we, you know, have the information. That's what I'm looking for. I support having it, but I would like to have the information.
I agree with that.
Anybody else want to talk to us right now?
I'm taking up a new business, too.
Okay. Go on to public hearings. Fee schedule adoption, accordance with RSA 41,9A, four, the Wolfborough Select Board will hold a public hearing to receive public comment on the implementation of fees for ambulance billing rates. Billing rates proposed are in compliance with Senate Bill 245. Public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. It will be held Wednesday, November 19, 2025, at 6:30 PM, in Great Hall at the Town Hall located 84 South Main Street, Wolfborough. Any persons wishing to be heard on this matter are invited to attend the hearing and make their opinions known. Copy of fee schedule can be reviewed, Wolfborough Town Hall, Town website, under Fire Rescue Department, page or email, EM Secretary, Wolfborough U.S. Tom Yu.
Thank you, Tom Zadi, Fire Chief. As you know, as part of our ambulance transport program, one of the myriad of things we've had to put into place is the fee schedule for ambulance transport. If you recall, I think we put it before you about a month ago, and then we were indicated that we needed to have the public hearing on it. In summary, the proposed rates, essentially since this summer, when what was known as SB 245 passed the legislature and was signed by the Governor, the rates are dictated by the state. What you're looking at is essentially 325% of the Medicare rate that'll be in effect currently. The legislation that was signed also includes a timeframe for further study at the state level, and may result in some changes towards the 2027-28 timeframe, based on some of those findings and so forth. But for the foreseeable future, the rates are set by statute at 325% of the current Medicare rate. Deputy Chief Evangelistas here as well, who developed this, and we can certainly answer any questions that the Board or anybody else might have.
Board have any questions?
Do you want us to do it, or do you want to hear the public first?
Do the public first, I guess.
Yeah, let's get the public first.
Anybody from the public want to ask any questions about it? Okay, Linda?
Well, my, I just want to point out to the public that on November 5, we approved the collection policy and hardship waiver after a public hearing. So I just want people to know, this is the second phase. We had to have those policies in place before we could do the fees, and that's why they're in two different public hearings.
Anybody else?
I think that somebody would like to speak.
Judith Morrison, I have a question about how handling of assistance for folks who perhaps fall and need help getting up but don't need formal ambulance care, how that will be handled, and if there'll be a charge, such as we see on the information. Thank you.
Sure, that's a solid question. We do see a lot of that. The answer is no, that we don't charge today, our private contractor doesn't charge today for what we call a lift assist. That won't change.
I had a little trouble hearing you. Did you say that the rate is going to be...
Could you just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Sebastian Tornato.
Thank you.
And I'm a resident of Wolfborough, full-time. So, did I understand you to say that the rates are going to be 25% of the Medicare rate?
300.
325% of the Medicare rate. Do you know what the Medicare rate is?
Well?
Yeah.
The question was, what is the Medicare rate in 2025 currently? Let me back up a little bit. The rates are determined by the classification of the incident, which essentially means what level of treatment was provided. There are three levels of treatment. BLS, or basic life support, ALS-1, advanced life support 1, advanced life support 2. The current rate for BLS is $577.08. ALS-1, $685.28. ALS-2, $991.86. And obviously, multiply that by 325% to get the actual rate. That's what is billed to an insurance company for Medicare.
Okay, well, thanks for the clarification. I just, we had an incident, and obviously, it doesn't reflect on you. It reflects more on the current ambulance provider. My granddaughter was here. She dislocated her knee. She was down at the town docks, couldn't get out of the boat. My wife called the ambulance service to get her out of the boat. They got her out of the boat, stabilized her knee, transported her to Huggins Hospital, and for that service, my daughter received a bill of $6,000. And so I'm trying to figure out how to reconcile that with what you're saying. So I would figure that that's basic service, which is, what, 600 bucks? So they charge 10 times what the Medicare rate is, so.
I can't answer that specifically, but not knowing what procedures may have been administered, or what medications may have been administered, I can't tell you if that's a basic level call or not. I don't want to get into your personal medical stuff, believe me.
That's fine. I just, there was no medications administered. They basically popped her knee back on, in place, put a brace on her, and transported her to the hospital. That was it. So, but anyways, I just wanted to see how it compares to what we're currently being billed. So I think you've answered that question. Thanks.
Yeah, the current rates are in the contract with Stewarts. I can't recite those off the top of my head, but I think what you're going to find is since this legislation passed, both private providers and fire department providers around the state will be essentially doing the same thing we're talking about, because it is, now it's mandated by statute.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public want to speak?
We should mention, too, that one of the main drivers of that legislation we keep referring to was, it did away with what's called balanced billing. So in other words, we do a BLS transport, the patient's insurance and/or Medicare Medicaid is billed at $1,875.51. The amount that their insurance company pays is what they pay. The difference, we can't bill for, that goes away. It's kind of like a, set the ambulance aside, a visit to the emergency department or your own physician. You see the paperwork. The bill was $10,000, insurance paid $2,000, and that's it. So that's kind of, we're in the, kind of the same boat in that regard. But what that legislation did was prevent what they call balanced billing. In other words, your insurance company pays, and then the agency then bills you individually for the difference. That's no longer legal. You can't do that anymore. So the bill is billed.
Any other questions? Lloyd? Somebody want to make a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed Wolfborough Fire Rescue Rates as presented to the Board of Selectmen on November 19, 2024, 25.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion amongst us? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Chiefs.
Next is a temporary event permit. Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 19, 2025, at 6:30. Consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfborough Chamber of Commerce to host the annual Christmas in Wolfborough Parade, Santa's Hut, November 29, 2025, to December 24, 2025. Parade at 3 PM, tree lighting 3:30 to 3:45 on November 29. Permit number 2025-63.
Hi, Mary DeVries, and we have the annual Christmas in Wolfborough kicking off, as you heard, on the 29th with the parade. Before the parade, Bob will be back with his Fill a Truck with Toys event from noon to 4 on parade day. He'll be set up in front of the Chamber of Commerce, and all the toys that are collected go directly to the Wolfborough Children's Christmas Fund. So looking forward to that. This is his third year with the truck out front, and last year, it was packed, and just a lot of very generous people taking care of families during the holidays. So that's noon to 4, and then the parade at 3, followed by the lighting of the community Christmas tree, and then Santa and Mrs. Claus, which, by the way, we have heard from the North Pole, and they will be spending their time in Wolfborough again. And they'll travel in the parade, and then walk up to Santa's Hut, and the hut will be open from 4 to 6 on that day. New this year, Clear Lakes Corral is inviting the public, everyone, to come out for a Christmas caroling sing-along, and they will be at First Congregational Church immediately following the parade. So you can make your way up to the hut, and then up to caroling, if you'd like.
That's cool.
And we have visiting at Santa's Hut from the 29th through December 24th. So we'll have those hours posted soon on the hut, which, by the way, the hut just was delivered. It's not quite ready for Santa yet, but it's in place, and that's thanks to Corral's towing, brought that over for us again and put it there. And so the hours, again, will soon be published on the hut. They're also at wolfboroughchamber.com, or give us a call anytime at the Information Center, 569-2200.
Any questions for Mayor? Thank you. Want to make a motion?
I move to approve a temporary event permit for the Wolfborough Chamber of Commerce to host the annual Christmas in Wolfborough Parade and Santa's Hut, November 29, 2025, to December 24, 2025. Parade at 3 PM, am I correct? Tree lighting 3:30 to 3:45. Permit number 2025-63.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have alcohol permit. Wolfborough Select Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 19, 2025, on or about 6:30 PM at the Wolfborough Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfborough, New Hampshire, to consider the application for issuance of an alcoholic beverage permit to the Lakes Region Curling Association for their end-of-season ceremony on December 14, 2025, the Abenaki Ski Lodge on 390 Pine Hill Road, from 6:30 to 8:30.
Hi, my name is Andrea Dudley. I'm here representing the Curling Association. This is the fourth or fifth time that we've used the lodge at Abenaki to celebrate the end of our curling season. The event will be held, as you mentioned, on December 14. Our members love it, because it's an easy walk from Pop Whalen across the parking lot to Abenaki, and this permit would allow people to bring beer or wine for their own consumption. It's a period of about two hours that they spend there. It will be curling members and their guests, so it's not open to the general public.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to entertain a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to issue an alcoholic beverage permit to the Lakes Region Curling Association for their end of the season ceremony on December 14, 2025, at the Abenaki Ski Lodge at 390 Pine Hill Road, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is a bulk vote. This includes weekly manifests, land use change tax.
We need to remove the land use tax, number 2, Alpine Meadows Drive. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Property tax refunds, property tax credits and exemptions, raffle permit, the Children's Center. All right. Somebody want to make a motion to approve A through E?
I'll make a motion to approve A through D, minus B2.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor?
Aye. What do you want to do about E?
Oh, I bet, and E, and E.
And then the motion to add E to the motion, which is a second again.
That's the Children's Center.
Yep.
All those in favor again?
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is Citizens for Wolfborough People's Petition.
Hi, my name is Anne Blodgett, a concerned citizen, 74-year summer and 15-year full-time resident. I have always loved it here, and it's my real home. My background, I had a 35-year career in financial services and corporate risk management in New York City and Boston. Most of those years, I'd led teams of experts who pulled together and sought solutions for clients on a daily basis. We always had the client's best interests and long-term objectives in mind, and continuously, we sought the best way to help them navigate their future cost-effectively. Managing and foreseeing risk was paramount. Since moving here, I have chaired two local nonprofits, and served on various town committees and commissions, from a master plan committee to the town manager interviewing process, where we recommended Becky Marrow, to the Charette and the Heritage Commission, to name a few. Currently, I'm on no town committees, nor am I running for office. So I wanted to start out, here's a pertinent definition of the word "town" for tonight. A town can be a legal or geographic entity with a specific population, while community describes the social connections and shared life that exist within that entity. I say we are both. Tonight, we want to refocus on the community and town we all care about. So let me start tonight by recognizing your hard work and service, and your endless hours of meetings. I want to assure you that this petition is intended to provide a path to benefit the Select Board, the town staff, and most of all, the taxpayers. I think we all want to be proud of our town. There is a groundswell of those who care. Many of your constituents and stakeholders say, "We can do better." There is frustration and loss of confidence, and a sense we can't continue on the current path. We know you want this budget to pass, but in my opinion, our town needs help in rebuilding confidence as we look towards the future of Wolfborough. The good news is that people are concerned and care. Further good news, area stakeholders increasingly watch meetings, speak up, offer assistance, and volunteer, and that is all very powerful. Look at the people in the room tonight. Tonight, as a taxpayer and citizen involved with the growing organization, Citizens for Wolfborough, I respectfully ask that you listen to the voices in the room, comments online at our open petition, and citizens' observations. This People's Petition concept evolved over the last two years. This spring, Citizens for Wolfborough decided now is the time for an intervention of sorts. You also heard from individuals standing right here, or you have received their written emails offering help or course correction. After two default budgets, watching many inconclusive meetings, and seeing deteriorating town assets, it sure seems like this is the time for well-meaning citizens' concerns to be heard and taken seriously. Thus, we are seeking an objective look with outside help by the petition which states as follows. "We, the undersigned, support a 2026 warrant article to hire a consulting firm to do an independent review and report of our town management, its operations, processes, efficiency, workplace culture, and organizational structure." This report would include actionable recommendations for our town management. Since its grassroots, nonpartisan founding 2.5 years ago, Citizens for Wolfborough has been attending meetings here, speaking up as individuals, and meeting together to try to demystify town government for fellow stakeholders. We provide weekly updates of upcoming meetings, and we have a website with resource information which is not easily found on the town website or elsewhere. The website and its blog were designed to be helpful to all. The value of the organization has grown in light of the challenges we face with both old and new town websites and less press coverage. Our mission and meetings are open to all, and we have coalesced around how to help our town government be more transparent, more financially efficient, and more accountable to taxpayers and stakeholders. Thus, the petition. "We, the undersigned, support a 2026 warrant article to hire a consulting firm to do an independent review and report of our town management, its operations, processes, efficiency, workplace culture, and organizational structure." This report would include actionable recommendations for our town management. I repeat it so for those who didn't catch it the first time, and I can repeat it again. This was offered to stakeholders, this petition was offered to stakeholders both on paper and online. Right now, we have probably 225, 250, and they're still coming in, and we're going to leave the site open. So these opening comments that I'm about to go through... that I'm about to go through represent accumulated observations by Citizens for Wolfboro and comments that have come through from the petition, which you can all read. They're public information online. Other citizens and stakeholders are invited to follow me to the mic with more examples and experiences. We have been listening to you and ask that you now listen to us. As stated, increasing numbers are attending and watching town meetings on WCTV via YouTube. Awareness and concern are the recurring themes. So here we go with those recurring themes. Citizens are seeking transparency and accountability, efficient spending, communication of critical issues, updates and notice of hearings, human resource management, functional Select Board meetings with clear resolutions of ongoing issues, articulated and defined decision-making processes, equity and enforcement, future vision of Wolfboro tomorrow aligned with master plan and citizen surveys. So in our town, we're fortunate. We have dedicated and focused boards made up of volunteers. We have amazing nonprofits who enrich and enhance our community. We have beautiful lakes and lands that need protecting. Tonight, we are presenting a solution to help our town government get unstuck and match the excellence that surrounds us. We know we can do better. We see dysfunction and are bringing evidence and signatures to support this proposal to get outside help. Citizens for Wolfboro has been traffic, tracking specific subjects of concern over the last two years, going to meetings and so forth, listening and watching and... Here they are listed as examples, or their ongoing issues, in no particular order, but some of the things that we've inventoried over the last two years. You'll all get a copy of this, Linda, so you... Number one, asset management, lack of maintenance of infrastructure, assets and buildings in the recent past, the library, the pop, the Libby, and the community center. Also, the maintenance and management of town listed responsibilities in the master plan, from beaches to roads. Number two, in a warrant article in 2023, Wolfboro appropriated approximately $1 million in tax dollars to fix an E. coli issue at Carey Beach. They did not and still do not know the source of the pollution. The $1 million project did not fix the problem. Number three, implementation of the procurement and bid policy process. Number four, follow-through on results and recommendations of the many committees. Number five, decision-making process and efficiency. Example, meetings on dock leases, community center discussions, sidewalks, propane storage at Cape Park, crosswalk parking spaces, and so on. Number six, the Libby. The financial support opportunity from donors needed Select Board endorsement and support of that warrant article. Opportunity was lost, and trustee duty of care and maintenance of the facility and collections continued to decline. Number seven, for four years, there was solid documentation of the planning department missteps, which finally resulted in an audit by an outside consultant. There are still unaddressed items from that audit report that need addressing. Number eight, the Pop Whalen. Public-private partnership funding shortfall was accepted by Select Board. Taxpayers then were on the hook. Public-private partnership models, the model of public-private partnerships, has been successfully used in our town, but now is tainted. Number nine, Main Street Construction, the project management, communication, and the process. Number 10, inequitable pricing of leases and other agreements for use of town assets, specifically docks and buildings. Inequity, number 11, inequity and enforcement of regulations. Number 12, need for town engineer for infrastructure maintenance, storm water runoff mitigation, and to protect water quality. Number 13, communicate the water and sewer capacity report. Publishing our water and sewer capacity is fundamental to planning future Wolfboro. Number 14, Smith River Dam Management in 2024. Number 15, recruitment, employee reviews, exit interviews, compensation equity, managing unfilled positions and workplace culture. Give attention to, please give attention to proven HR best practices. 16, last year's assistant town manager position was instituted by the Select Board, causing budget impact and top-heavy management structure. 17, improve communication and responses to constituents as well as interdepartmental communication. 18, website. The new website was poorly announced and launched. Needs a communication strategy to assist users. Develop a plan to, for fully populating the website. 19, usage of warrant articles to backfill budget reductions. You guys termed it as budget engineering for optics. 20, community TV defunded in the 2025 default budget. 21, master plan adherence, follow-up, and implementation. 22, funding of chamber staffer and chamber town calendar by taxpayers. Chambers are generally self-sustaining member organizations. 23, new town planner resignation after three months. Citizens want to hear, what did we learn? How will we rectify? 24, public safety building project faced underfunded completion. And last but not least, overall, support departments in spending smarter, in better use of existing resources and assets, and treating taxpayers like customers. As you have said publicly, the buck stops with you five and Mr. Pinio. Let's look forward, we can do better. There are, however, some good results and some high-functioning teams. For example, the Energy Committee and the Ambulance Committee of last year brought real results, supported with data. It should be noted, they had outside consultants supporting them as part of their process. I sincerely hope that tonight we have inspired citizens to run for office or volunteer once an organized path is set for the future of Wolfboro. Maybe there are future candidates in this room tonight or watching at home who will run for Select Board, Planning Board, Zoning Board, and Budget Committee, to name a few. I hope that citizens will see this as a gateway and platform for their candidacy and volunteerism for the future of Wolfboro. So I will now reread the petition again, if you want me to. It's a simple request with ample substantiation. "We, the undersigned, support a 2026 warrant article to hire a consulting firm to do an independent review and report of our town management, its operations, processes, efficiency, workplace culture, and organizational structure." This report would include actionable recommendations for our town management. Tonight, we need your agreement to set up an immediate blue-ribbon team consisting of experienced organizational pros with no more than two Select Board members. In short order, we ask that team to put forth an agreed-upon warrant article for the 2026 ballot based on this People's Petition. This is a means to seek help in integrating the town master plan, help with your stated 2025 goals, and most importantly, answering the will of the citizens and community. Additionally, if we don't plan and organize our land use in this town, the Wolfboro of the future will look very different than what we see today. Perhaps it won't be a place that people want to visit or move to. Doing this together, we will have taken a step closer to management efficiency for the town and community we care about. Consider this a way forward to a better path. Thank you for listening and acting on this petition tonight. I can read it again, but I'm going to hand you a copy of these remarks. Also, for those of you in the room who haven't signed the petition, we're going to keep it open until January, and you can leave your comments there online, and you'll see others. And I thank you for your time and attention. And fellow citizens are going to follow me to the mic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
I know others have things to say, so... I'm not going to moderate, so just come on up.
My name's Abigail Adams, and I live on Pleasant Street, but I'm actually reading a statement by Marge Hart, who lives on 20 Libby Street, but couldn't be here tonight. And she writes, "I fully support for this request for a 2026 warrant article to hire a consulting firm to do an independent review. As many of you know, there was a very thorough evaluation of the town planner done by the Municipal Resources Incorporated. This report highlighted many issues with the town planning department that affected my property directly in addition to other projects in town. I appreciate that there was some action taken on this report. Unfortunately, the action did not go far enough. The specific issues in the report were not followed through with and therefore did not get addressed. This has resulted in safety issues not getting addressed, impact of my husband and I needing to spend thousands of dollars out of our own pockets to address drainage issues caused by the inadequate oversight of a neighboring project, issuing electrical and plumbing permits before a building permit was approved, not performing site visits before a public hearing, not issuing stop orders for appeals, and not applying for variances required for the neighboring project, et cetera. In my mind, having specific details called out in such a report that the town paid for would warrant 100% adherence of the results to ensure that taxpayers are getting the full value of their money and that the town is protecting their citizens. Additionally, hiring a professional planner for the town was spot-on. Too late for my project, but it was a great hire to protect other taxpayers' projects, whether homeowners living in town or business owners trying to address needs of the community. I am very saddened that we were only able to hold on to this professional for approximately three months. There is a problem. I support the request of a warrant article to help the town selectmen and management better serve the community. Wolfboro is a beautiful town, and we need to do better." Thank you.
Thanks, Abby.
Sebastian Tordenato again. First, I'd like to commend Anne for doing a wonderful job. I think she covered it very well. I agree with what she said in her talk, and I agree with the petition, and I endorse having that put on the warrant article, mostly because I find that what seems to occur in town is very opaque to me. Now, I've tried to pay attention over the past two, three years as to what's been happening. And I got to be honest with you, it's like a mystery. It's like, okay, I think we're going to do this, or the town is doing this, and then like by magic, something else happens. And I can never figure it out. And obviously, let me give you an example. So we've been on a default budget for two years. The past two years, we've been on a default budget. And what that means to me is the budget is fixed. You don't get to spend more money than what you spent the year before. Is that correct? No, it's not correct. Obviously, it's not correct. Because on a default budget, my taxes increased 10% and then 12%, which, by the way, coincidentally, is about what you asked for as a budget increase during the deliberative session. So it seems to me that regardless of what the voters say, you're going to increase the budget by whatever you think you need to increase it by. And I remember the moderator saying, you know, "We're going to get to see democracy in action." I think the only thing I got to see was a little bit of a shell game. You know, you all said that, okay, well, you guys turned this down. You made some changes to the budget. One of the changes most noticeably was we were not going to have an assistant town manager. As soon as the budget got turned down, we had an assistant town manager. What's the point of getting the public input if it gets ignored? Okay, when the public votes down the budget, what they're telling you is, you're spending too much. We want you to spend less. We want you to live within our means. Okay, you guys keep raising the budget by 10, 12% a year. Most of us are retired. I can tell you, my COLA for Social Security is going to be a whopping 2.5, 2.6%. And my taxes are going up another 12%, I'm sure, at least. So we need to have some control. If we are the people who run the government by our vote, we need to have some control over what we have as a government. And at this point, I fully endorse what Anne has brought forward, just so that we can get some control over our own government. Because right now, it certainly feels, and I've been coming up here for 50 years, only the past five I've been here full-time, but in the past five years that I've been paying attention to what happens, it feels like we don't have a say in this. Regardless, I used to think I didn't have a say in this because I was a summer guy. You know, I was one of the summer people, affectionately known as Flatlanders. I know, you're going to laugh at that one, Dave. So I'm now a full-time resident, and I'm paying attention. And I tell you, the money's coming out of my wallet faster than I can make it. And my number one expense is property tax. It's unbelievable. So I agree with Anne. I encourage you to support that and to vote yes on it. Make a motion, vote yes. It's not that hard to say, "I make a motion," and then vote yes. I'll second the motion. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Derek Brown, 30 Libby Street. I want to echo Marge Hart's well-thought-out discussion here, specific to the MRI report. We were personally mentioned several times in that report. It's easy for anybody online to look it up. What I see is, yes, we made what was promising to be a great improvement in the planning department, but it's clear the problem still exists and is rampant. With all the changes that were made in personnel and planning, the problem still exists. So clearly, that wasn't the main problem. I think the main problem is right here in this room. And somebody needs to say it, so I'm saying it. Thank you.
Good evening, Howard Lowe, resident of Wolfboro. I want to speak on behalf of the proposal for the warrant article to have an objective review of town operations. I think it's a healthy, smart thing to do so that we can have objective analysis of how we do business. We are surely going to learn of problems, and we are surely going to learn of opportunities. And I think it would be incumbent on all of you to support this because the citizens want it. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Kevin French. I'm going to come at this a little bit of a different way. Lifelong resident, born in Wolfboro, owned property in Wolfboro, had a business, Stone Masonry, 40 years in town. Also in that time, I worked for, I worked for the Parks and Rec Department at Abenaki Ski Area for 24 years. In that time, I worked for three different Parks and Rec directors. The system was designed that there was a Parks and Rec director that had an assistant, and then there was the maintenance division that was run by Kathleen Rankin that had an assistant. That person was Rick LaPointe. Four people ran Parks and Rec. And they had people like me who came in and worked part-time to help out the situation. Okay, so in the course of my 24 years at Abenaki, I became the head groomer, the head snowmaker, and the mountain manager operations. I resigned in 2020, January 3rd. So it was before COVID hit. I had prepared the mountain that year, but resigned because of the complications that were building up. So this all starts with this graph. And I don't know if the public can see this graph, but this graph starts out in 2011, and it just shows the number of participants at Abenaki. The number's important to me because in 1996, when I started, the number was zero. It was zero because the mountain hadn't been running in a few years. Lack of snow, lack of maintenance, so forth. So when I joined in 1996, under Sue Glenn, the current Parks and Rec director, I did it as a volunteer position. Kathleen Rankin set me up with the people that taught me the management of the rope tow. His name was Roger Courier. He was the son of the man who built it. Okay, the rope tow was built in, I believe, 1946. So over the course of my time there, I spent probably 100 hours of diagnosing different things on the rope tow with Roger. So I know the rope tow inside and out. I guess what I'm getting my point there is I was trained the very first year I was on job. Not only was I trained, I was told I couldn't volunteer because of the town insurance, because I was working on the town property and I was working on equipment that was controlling the system of Abenaki. So I needed to be on their payroll. Okay, so in the course of that, that number in 2011, not in 96. In 96, when I started, Abenaki did not have snowmaking. We were running a 1954 groomer. We may only open 28 to 30 days a year, but we were putting kids on the hill. Our number started at zero, remember? And by 2011, we were over 4,000 people on the hill, skiing on that hill a year. Okay, in 2004, Friends of Abenaki started, and that was a godsend because they started raising money to put in snowmaking system and buy us a groomer. Okay, groomer was the first purchase. It was a great purchase. It was a used groomer that had a 10-year life expectancy. We received the groomer in 2005. So replacement theoretically would be 2015. Okay, so in 2005, we got the groomer. In 2006 and '07, they supplied portable snowmaking system from HKD. It was basically two trailers that were high-pressure pumps that we hooked up to another pump that pumped out of the pond, and we started making snow on the hill. I was not part of the snowmaking crew that first year, but soon after, the next year I started because it was tough for me as a groomer to go out and pull the snow guns that they had left sitting there all night in one spot, and they froze themselves in. So I learned pretty quickly that you just don't leave things sitting in one spot. You move them around. Plus, there's acreage on Abenaki. The hill itself is about five and a half acres. Okay, so to cover that in snow, we used to do it with portable snow guns and 1,000 feet of hose. Eventually, we purchased more hose, like 1,400 feet of hose. And we continued that way from 2006 to 2011. 2011, Friends of Abenaki raised enough money to put in a 13-gun snow system. It is stated in our town reports that it's a 13-gun snow system. Running that system, we could run six. Six out of the 13 guns could run efficiently because the air compressor that was supplied was an old Nissan Bakery air compressor that could only supply six guns. Eventually, we started renting another compressor and piggybacking two together. That allowed us to get eight guns. So eight out of the 13 guns that you guys say we have run efficiently. Okay, I asked for years. There is no communication, okay? So during these times, Abenaki was building. And if you look at the chart, you will see it's going up from 2011 to 2015, '16, actually. Okay, it was going up because we had a good Parks and Rec director then. Sadly, our first changed, and our second one was Ethan Hippel. And he was very into skiing and kids and getting the community involved. So under his tenure, our numbers went from the zero to 7,700 people, children, kids, skiing at Abenaki in the winter. Okay, that was in 2016. 2016, he left us. And somehow, his assistant just slides into the job. The job is not posted to the general public. It's not out there to the world to say, is there somebody else out there as good as him, maybe even better than him, to come in? I never believed that job was ever posted. The current Parks and Rec director, who was the assistant at that time, moved into the job. Four years working under that current director, I saw the numbers, and you can look at the graph. It starts from there over, a big drop, and then slowly going downhill. Notice, 2020, the numbers drop off. Not a single number. 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, 2025. So is there no one skiing? Is there, my question is that? I've tried to get these numbers. I've asked selectmen. I've asked people. They say they're out there, but I haven't got them. Okay, so this is under the current management of the Parks and Rec director at that time. So after four years of working for her, I resigned in 2020. And I did it because there was no communication. She didn't have leadership skills. Everybody was running rampant. We have the beautiful thing of Friends of Abenaki who raise money and gift us things. Well, it's a two-sided story. So they gave us a groomer. Okay, no one gave us any money to maintain the groomer. The groomer, given to us in 2005, replacement date in 2015 as a 10-year recommended replacement, I knew was coming up. So in 2012, Ethan Hippel and myself got talking and decided that we should possibly make a groomer fund. Us people paid for that. That went up front of the board. It was passed, and it created the Abenaki Fund. You guys have the checkbook of it. You're the caretakers of the checkbook of it. Okay, so that was created in 2012. We, as taxpayers, started putting money into that fund. In the beginning, it was not a lot of money. It was $15,500. But after time, that built up. So in 2000, let's see, where do you want to jump to? We'll go to 2022, two years after I resigned, okay? I look at the numbers, and we are left with $101,000 in that account. The number should be higher than that, but money has been taken out of it. The account was designed to replace the groomer. Okay, the gift that was given to us. So by the time, okay, the groomer, it should have been replaced in 2015. It wasn't. In 2020, the year that I resigned, the groomer was on its last leg. Okay, I don't know what the expenses are after I left on the groomer, but somebody should investigate how much money was spent on the groomer, knowing it needed to be replaced and it was over its life expectancy. We had an account that was building to replace it. Okay, so that is in 2022. There was $100,000-plus in that account. In 2025, the account is now down to $33,000. Okay, not only, so when we started the account, it was $15,500. That stayed that way for four years. After that, it went up to $16,700. Stayed like that for four years. Then for two years, it was at $20,000. This is money that's coming out of our taxes, okay? Extra money after we're paying Parks and Rec Department to do their job. And this is to maintain the equipment that keeps getting gifted to us by the Friends of Abenaki. So Abenaki's building, and we have all this stuff. And now we're at a crucial point where the groomer is like, we need to replace it. What are we doing? So what do we do? We put a ton of money. I believe they bought new tracks in 2023. It needs to be looked up, what they spent on the groomer. Because in 2025, when we had the money, or should have had the money by that point, the total would have been $243,000 into that account, enough to purchase a groomer or put a really good down payment on a groomer so that we wouldn't have the tax on us. Last year, you asked us for $30,000 to put into that fund and $35,000 to pay for your groomer lease. Okay, so now we are leasing a groomer. So we used to own a groomer that was gifted to us, and now we're leasing a groomer and when we had the money in the account to purchase a groomer. Okay, I'm not saying that other things don't fall into play. Those other things are stated by the town reports. The Friends of Abenaki put lighting on Twister Trail, the new Twister Trail, in 2022. The check was written from you. $40,000 for lights out of the groomer fund. Okay, that's not the Friends of Abenaki paying for it. It's you people paying for it. Okay, so if you look at these numbers, the graph is going up, right? And then this graph is going down. In 2020, upon my resignation, they did expand a new trail. So Abenaki grew by a third. Their snowmaking grew by a third. They put new snow lines on it. We used to do, with that 7,000 children, we did that with one pipeline and 1,400 feet of hose and eight guns. Okay, so I don't know what the number was last year, and I'd love to ask Christine Collins if she was here. She could give me that number possibly, or maybe both. How many children skied at that mountain last year? Or the previous year? Because I know the year that COVID hit, they closed early. When people needed things to do outdoors, the ski mountain would have been a great place for families to get outside and do what they needed to do outdoors. And they closed the doors. I know in 2020, Parks and Rec did not do any programs. Was there a surplus in their budget because they didn't do anything? Question to the town manager. I guess where I am going here is you are allowing unqualified people to run your departments. In 2023, this happened. Okay, so I left, and I felt like I was a good part of Abenaki, and I did a lot for this town. But in 2023, the Parks and Rec restructured their system, and they created a Director of Operations position for the Pop Wheel and Art Center, which is the pop skating area, and Abenaki Ski Area. That person, and I don't know how this job got created because you as selectmen never came to us. When he wanted an assistant, we all had to vote on it. You gave it to him anyways, but we did vote on it. No one asked us if the current director could have an assistant to run another opportunity, the rink, okay? She was hired. Ethan Hippel was hired. Sue Glenn was hired. Previous directors were hired to do the job of running Abenaki, running Parks and Rec, and running the rink. In 2023, that job got split. I don't know if it was you or who created the job, but the job was created. So now there is a new person that runs the rink and Abenaki. In 2024, again, we change things. The current director role is now going to be split into two managerial roles. One person to run the rink, one person to run Abenaki. Christine took it upon herself to take an assistant that she had and put him into the manager of Abenaki. So I guess what my point is, is when Christine was hired, it would be like, I'm a stonemason. You hired me to come to your house, and you're building a house. You're going to build a chimney. I'm going to build your chimney. I'm going to build your stone walls, and I'm going to build your walkways. In the process of me building your chimneys, you hire somebody else to build the walkways and hire somebody else to build the stone walls. Do I still get paid the bid I put in on the job for the chimney, the stone walls, and the walkways? No, I do not. I get paid for the work I do. So Christine Collins, the current director, has moved out of her position. That is her position as the Parks and Rec director to run Abenaki and run the hockey rink. Now, we have Brian Paul. Sadly, I hear he's on imminent, permanent, permanent leave. I know that we lost our current other person that was supposed to be running our town. So I guess when we look at things, we need to go, why are all these people leaving? Because I know under my tenure, when it was myself, Kathleen Rankin, Rick LaPointe, Ethan Hippel, and Christine Collins managing that place. Okay, so two managers and the rest helpers. It worked. It all worked. I mean, it was simple. Okay, now you have turned around and turned it into nine people. So explain how you go from four to nine. And look at the graph again. This is what it's showing. Your tax bill shows it. Every payment that is going up in our taxes is because she's hiring managers to do her job. So if we are hiring managers to do a job, what is she doing? In the paperwork, it says it allows her time to spend on programs, on the beaches, and all the other things. So she has had an entire year now to put her straight focus into this. I know that the soccer program, I was part of the soccer program. I believe it is back up and running. I believe it is back up and running now. I've asked for numbers but haven't gotten them. But I know in COVID, obviously it wasn't there because there were no programs. I don't know, so that's 2020. I don't know 2021, 22 and 23. But I took, I took, I did a little math and from a nine-year period, 2011 to 2019, there were fifteen hundred kids that went through that program. That program is K1, kindergarten to first grade, second and third grade, fourth, fifth and sixth. I coached every level of it. We used to walk the children down from Carpenter School to the soccer field. And we did that and we had teams and we played. I do not believe that even exists anymore. So that is fifteen hundred kids that are not getting service in this town. Your Parks and Rec director should be providing opportunity, not taking it away. In 2000, I will, I will try to wrap this up and be fast, but some things need to be stated. In 2023, I mean Kathleen Rankin was forced to retire early. So she had started her career, she was there when I started in 96. So she had started her career right out of high school. And the Rankin family has done amazing things for this town. They started a swim team in the 1950s, her uncle. That swim team doesn't exist anymore. It was a legacy thing. Hundreds and hundreds of kids a year took those lessons and did that. No longer exists. So these are things that your director has taken away from our community. You can't build a community if you don't support our children. I gave back to this community for 24 years because I was raised here and our public, our Parks and Rec supplied me with opportunities. They built a BMX track where the rink sits now. I skated on the rink before it ever had a building over, over there. I grew up doing every bit of Parks and Rec and that's why I wanted to give back and that's why I did. Until we got an incompetent leader. I was at my wit's end. I've spoken to other people about it and I didn't know what to do, so I resigned. But I think you need to take a hard look at your department heads and figure out what is going on with this town. Cause they split budgets up and send things here and send things there. Numbers don't match up. They are not qualified. I wish Beau was here and I wish Christine was here because I have questions for them that would prove their incompetence. Because I question who is actually running Abenaki and what their knowledge is. Because I took the walk up there today for the first time in five years. It's not pretty. You talk about water quality in Wolfboro? You s- I do? All right, fine.
Hello, Bobby Budman. Uh, I'm just going to quickly say I was handed this before this evening. As the evening was starting, this sheet that has 25 things listed on it. I know that just myself, I have come before the select board at your meetings during public input and have discussed 17 of them. So I'm looking around the room and I'm seeing all these wonderful people who have come out to say that they love our town as much as you guys who are serving love our town. So I think that maybe there's a problem if just one citizen can say, I've already spoken on 17 of these issues. And I really hate to say in public input tonight, I'm going to speak on an 18th one. And that will be number 19 because of the, the budget. There are things to talk about, about moving that funding into Warren articles that I'm a little concerned about with RSAs. And that I do believe one of the members suggested we move the budget down so people go through the whole ballot. That's actually highly problematic because as you know, it's 10% of your budget, any Warren articles. So if you put it at the bottom, they remove Warren articles backwards. So if you do take these citizens up on their offer, which I think there are plenty of them here saying they are concerned, please don't put this Warren article on last because it sounds like it should be up near the beginning. Thank you.
My comments have pictures, so I'm going to distribute.
When you go back, tell us your name. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Cameron Harold, Sewell Road. I support hiring a consultant to help us manage our town for the benefit of residents. Lack of code enforcement, deteriorating infrastructure and rapid development have become a significant problem. And we need help focusing on management, spending and operations. Of several concerns, I will share three. One, we need local codes to match state laws and we need enforcement. My neighbor purposely collects and diverts water onto my property through four open pipes and a hose. It is state law that this is illegal. A town manager, two heads of public works, two code officers and a board member agree that this is illegal, but suggest I hire a lawyer and file, file a civil suit. I have already spent thousands of dollars on drainage solutions and land management. I don't particularly want to be adversarial. Advising residents to be litigious rather than adopting state codes and enforcing them causes division over unity. There's a picture of the infraction. Second, we need to fix known infrastructure problems before relighting new projects. We can't seem to build durable town roads, drainage and sidewalks. The storm drains on Sewell Road sank below grade almost immediately after they were installed 15 years ago. The runoff just goes around the drain, erodes the asphalt and creates a number of hazardous conditions. On a road that borders the big lake, runoff missing the storm drain is not good. Every vehicle drives in the middle of the road to avoid the drain potholes on both sides. There is a two-foot drop without a curb on the entrance of Sewell Road from North Main. Our downtown sidewalks are ugly. Uneven, heat absorbing asphalt with untapered edges, missing bricks and broken concrete. Except unacceptable from a safety standpoint and aesthetically terrible. I counted 82 squares of concrete that need to be replaced on Main Street, Railroad and Central Avenues. There are loose wires tied around utility poles, metal sheathing sticking out into the pedestrian walkway and yellow insulation foam that looks like a large intestine between the pipes. The downtown small business district is eight blocks. Our retail shops, restaurants, residents and visitors need safe sidewalks. Our town is a reflection of us. Third, and last, regulating town roads is a stated Board of Select Person's duty and responsibility, RSA 41. I am beyond concerned, to use a nice word, that several residential roads have become a trailering superhighway for one expanding commercial business. It is already known that Goodhue moves hundreds of boats making thousands of trips through town on narrow residential roads not meant or built for this purpose. It is excessive and has adversely affected quiet residential neighborhoods, road conditions, property values and the safety and usability for residents and visitors alike. Goodhue's website states that they trailer boats from spring to fall, seven days a week. During that time, trucks and trailers go back and forth with and without boats, white company trucks in and out for coffee and lunch, the 18-wheeler Coca-Cola truck on Fridays, significantly over the 10-ton weight limit on a town road. The fuel truck, also over restricted limits, roars down the road on Sundays after midnight and back at 1:00 AM. In addition to weight, there are vehicle width restrictions given stretches of this road are less than 20 feet wide. The fuel delivery picture is dark because it was after midnight when I took it. The boats are serviced at Sewell Road location, so trailering happens all year long. The smell of chemical and engine toxins too close to the lake, parked trailers on both sides of the road on the blind corner at the marina, forklifts backing up into the residential road. How a small community dock became a year-round commercial, sales service, off-site storage, trailering mega-business is beyond me. While the site may have been grandfathered, it has certainly expanded from the original footprint and business model. Perhaps the note on their tax card that state's approval was given based on some details from a limited plan is worth looking into. On April 1st, 2024, their request for a special exception to build nine more storage garages at their filter bed location was denied by the ZBA. Yet the recent clear cut of 40 acres at this location seems to indicate that the possible future commercial park noted on their tax card is here. They're getting away with an assault on several neighborhoods and town roads. A fact contrary to many recommendations on our master plan. Walkable neighborhoods ensuring scenic roads are preserved, requiring developers to conduct traffic impact studies, adopting local road standards that encourage context sensitivity, to name a few. We need town roads regulations to be enforced. The 30-mile per hour speed limit, parking restrictions, vehicle weight limit, vehicle width limit based on non-standard width roads on their route, use of the residential road between their buildings, days and hours of operation, facility capacity as it relates to the number of trips back and forth, and the fundamental question, are they allowed to use residential roads for commercial operations? Last, perhaps intent to cut permits over two acres should not be passed by a bulk vote without identifying the property, the development intention and the impact on residents. I'm asking my town government to prioritize residents and a failing infrastructure over development and commercial business because the trade-off is too great. Perhaps a consultant can help us focus on the current issues and the forever effects of rapid growth. Thank you.
My name is Paul Zimmerman. I know each and every one of you on a personal basis. And I'm even beginning to like Jim. Individually, you're all very accomplished people dedicating your time and effort to the community. What I'm somewhat concerned about is collectively, your decisions are somewhat challenging. I'd like to encourage you to hire an outside consultant. I'm sure his cost would pay for himself three or four times over. Hire this consultant to execute exactly what's been presented to you this evening. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tina Kindwall. I'm a Wolfboro resident and I'm gonna, um, can you hear me?
Tina? Yep, there you go.
Okay. Um, I'm a Wolfboro resident and I'm going to read something on the part of some, a woman who can't be here tonight, Diane Mullin, who is the owner of Winnie Poff Station. Um, this is what she writes. "I sincerely apologize, but I will unfortunately not be able to attend this evening. I wanted to share my perspective on parking as it is my number one concern as a local business owner of 17 years. The only time the lack of available parking did not negatively affect my business was during the pandemic. At that time, we had a dedicated pickup spot directly in front of the store, which was essential for providing curbside service and customers and for customers stopping in to pick up large, heavy items like bags of food and cat litter. I would appreciate more transparency regarding why certain private businesses have dedicated parking spots allocated to them. The construction this spring had a significant impact on business. I understood that it needed to be completed and was understanding. But then to come into work and discover that overnight four spots were taken away was infuriating. We were not informed that this was going to happen or why it was happening. A decision that has such a negative effect on local business should involve the business owners." Thank you, Diane Mullin. Um, I'd like to say something on my part. I have lived in Willthor now for three and a half years, but have spent my entire life being here in the summer. My, my grandparents, great-grandparents before had a hotel. And so mom went to Brewster and Carpenter and, and, um, and I know this town really well. And I want to say that I know it's a labor of love for, for you guys, all of the work that you do. But to echo Paul, I think that it maybe would be really helpful to get some expert advice on how to work together better. And I'm not saying this to be critical. I'm just saying it as a concerned person. And just echoing everybody else, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else right now?
I have just a few things to say tonight. I'm Kathy Dragonfly and I watch a lot of these different meetings. And I'm sure we all realize that national politics are very hard on all of us right now. But all politics are local. And in an effort to unite us all tonight, I would like everyone to stand up and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to say, um, thank you to Kevin French for all his volunteering over many, many years. And, and you all as well. I understand it is a labor of love. But now we've seemed to be replacing all of these volunteers with pay, 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 pay. It's all we keep getting asked to do. We need to be more mindful about asking for money, but also for getting more volunteers that can do things. And I only have a couple of things to say about the Libby tonight. I'm sure I got it all out last time. There was a story, a three-page story in the Conway Daily Sun yesterday. Most, most of it is historical, but, um, it, it's long and it explains everything that's going on. So if anybody wants to follow that, um, that's good as well. You can still, um, you can still write letters to the editor about that. And the other thing I want to say about Friends of the Libby that I did not know was that it only costs $35 to be a friend. And if you're interested in the Libby as much as I am, $35 isn't a lot to support a local museum. Thank you.
Anybody else at this point?
I support, Suzanne Ryan, I support the petition. Kathy, thank you for the plug for the Libby, Friends of the Libby. I'm not here as a representative of- I'm not here as a representative of the Friends of the Libby, I'm here as a taxpayer and resident. You can't hear me? I'm talking into the... Could you hear me?
Yes, please.
Now we can.
Okay. I'm not representing the Friends of the Libby, I'm here as a taxpayer and resident. I'm gonna just skip right through some of the things I was gonna say. I think that we could use the Libby as a case, textbook case of failed management of town funds and property. It's a symptom of what seems to be running through the management of, I'm gonna say, property and the funds. How did this happen? Was there a disregard or turn a blind eye? There's been 12 studies done over the years, and yet the last comment that came from the board was, gee, didn't know it was that bad. Really? At least for the past decade, there has been... You know, this wasn't a mistake, so I'm gonna call it what it is. This wasn't a mistake that had just popped up two years or three years ago. This was a conscious choice to put the Libby at the bottom of the heap like the ugly sister, just to let it go away. Maybe we won't have to deal with it, have to look at it. In 2016, there was a warrant article to establish a capital reserve fund with $30,000 under RSA 351 for repairs and maintenance of town buildings and facilities. Libby is one of those. In 2017, you added $50,000 to that building maintenance capital reserve fund. I keep hearing, well, we don't have the money, or we didn't have the money. This could have been an ongoing effort from 2016 forward. We now have comparing to the 7/31/25 report from the Finance Department. In that account, $130,708.43. If you go to the 21 Town Report, it says we have $155,168. I find it interesting. But the interesting part of that is, zero has been expended. Zero! We haven't used any of that money for anything. Put a coat of paint on the community center with it. We also have the $300,000 warrant article. And again, I believe you have taken money out of that for the back wall repair. I'm not sure, but I think so. And that was as of 7/25. That had $338,032 in it. We've had money to just do small repairs, step by step, little at a time. I just find it very frustrating, the disregard and the blind eye. And from my point of view as a taxpayer, I find it negligent. It's just negligent that you've failed and that you've disregarded. It falls on all five of you and your predecessors to a different degree. John's new here, you're relatively new, Paul's been in and out, the two of you have been here forever.
Right here, yep.
Yep.
It's not news. It's not a news flash. It didn't just happen two years ago you found out about this. By the way, the town manager, I think you get a pass on this. You're not a trustee. You do have some influence and some oversight, but this falls on them. You're not protecting and caring for the duty of the property in accordance with the Dr. Libby will to protect that asset, simply keep the doors open by funding a budget and hiring people to operate it. You haven't been doing that. A budget, you look at the budget, it's $30,000, $40,000, which is half of its salary. The line item for building maintenance is like sometimes $3,000. What in the world are you doing with a budget like that for a building like that of its age? So where are we now? We have a million-dollar building rotting. We have a million-dollar waterfront parcel that is in question. With whatever falls out of all of this, I don't know if we're gonna end up keeping that waterfront. Shame on you if you let it go. The waterfront, it's nice being used for barges. The little amount of money we get off of that in the beginning wasn't going into a restoration fund, it was going into the general fund. I think the Department of Revenue Administration caught up with that. But it's still only like $30,000 or something dollars, it's not a lot amount. So now, just what are we gonna do? Are we gonna divest ourselves of the collection? Clever, very clever. An empty building, no reason to reclaim it, just bulldoze it. One last comment. I've been coming to these meetings probably for 15 years, in the last five years, probably every single one. I've got nothing better to do, I guess. And I, like this gentleman, have been trying to figure out what's happened to this board? What's happened to you? I don't understand. Is it the chemistry? Something's different. And the only thing I could come up with is to say to you all, this, you, the board, this board, it's not a competition. It's not a competition. Stop trying to one-upsmanship each and every one of you with the right answer, and don't be afraid to give an incorrect answer and then correct it. Work together. You're a board, you're a unit. It's not a competition. Thank you.
Thank you for all your time. We can do better. All of us want to do better. All of us want to be proud of this town. I'm hoping you'll take action on this tonight because we want to get it on the warrant. I think there are plenty of people who would volunteer. Anybody in the room would volunteer to help on a blue-ribbon team? Raise your hand. So, I mean, I think the help is there. I think if you hear us, there are observations and concerns that are deep and have been around, and so I'm hoping you'll move forward tonight with something. Thank you.
Sandy Wentworth, Wolfboro. This is the first time I've seen this thing Anne Blodgett put out, and I think it's sad that taxpayers have to do something like this. It's very informative, and I agree with it. I don't feel that the boards listen to the taxpayers at all. You know, we need to try to cut down taxes, they're always gonna go up. I'm tired of losing my friends moving to other towns and other states because they can't afford to live here. Some of the people in this town, town employees, I know there are some that get close to $200,000 a year. Most of the people, not most, a lot of the people here are living on social security. Some of them are trying to live on $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 a year, and we're paying for that. I personally had to give up my health insurance for 30 years. I couldn't afford that, the taxes and everything else going up. But I'm old now, I've got my social security, but I'm still working. You really need to follow through on some of these things. And I think out of the list, we all have certain things that bother us. I've been coming to more selectmen's meeting the past two months than I have in my lifetime. The thing that gets me, when you talk about saving money, I met with Brian before he became a selectman, wanted to put a sign in there, I had a long talk. A lot of it's little things. Got the town hall renovated, slate was coming off the roof. And from what I gathered, from what Brian told me, we put tape around two sides of the building. Couldn't afford to fix it, it was gonna cost over $200,000, making that number up, but it was something large like that. Brian was not a selectman at that time, and he happened to go up to Castle in the Clouds, talked with someone, and he'd get it done for like $20,000 in the fire department to use the ladder. That is saving money, it's that type of things we want to see. Of course, I won't give Brian any more credit because I'm disappointed, I'm tired of this town always trying to get rid of buildings and selling them. You have carpenter school way back. Someone had the bright idea, let's build a new one. But town got upset, no, you're not gonna do it, and you'd had to listen to us then. They were talking of taking it down and maybe turning it into a motel. The town hall needed repairs. Selectmen, and I can't blame all of you when I say selectmen, it's going back 40 years as well, not all of you. Well, let's give it back to Brewster for a dollar, we'll spend a few million and build a new one. The town people protested, we came up with the money and we fixed it. The old fire station, that's a new pet peeve. I had asked the community center for the newer people in town. I asked several years ago, why aren't we maintaining it? It was looking pretty bad. The people I talked to said, oh, go talk to Parks and Recs, they're in charge of it. Parks and Rec did nothing, but they could afford to build a new building down at Foss Field. The police fire station, oh, that's awful, it's been there 50 years. The police chief took pictures of cement that hadn't been repaired and stuff, we'd need to build a new one. And I wonder if we spent money looking around at new sites to get a new one? We ended up staying, fixing with what we had and building on to that. I'm furious about the Libby Museum. I don't think any of you have a right to sell that, that should have been maintained. You talk about wasting money, the Friends of the Libby Museum had raised over $2 million, not your fault per se that we lost on the warrant to get rest of the money, but from what I understand, you never supported it. But why did it get so bad to start with? Because no maintenance was done. Abenaki ski slope, we had a ski hut there. Oh, we have to build a new one because this is falling apart, it's all rotting. Why wasn't it maintained? So then we build over a million-dollar new slope hut on the other side. So then we're gonna have pop whale in. It's not gonna cause the town people anything, because now we've got land for them. We give them the land, but no one thought, oh, we don't have enough parking. The town had to go buy land and pay for parking there. Municipal electric department building on Laner Street, that's gonna be another sore subject because people are saying, let's tear it down. And they're saying it's got asbestos and stuff, it's not top priority, no one's using it or wants it, but it's something to start planning to address it, to get rid of it. The Foss Field playground, go back to that several years, we spent money building that, a lot of it was donated. And now they took out the baseball field, and I guess that's where we have all of the pickleball and all of those things. They wanted to take out the playground for the little kids as well. Townspeople had to say, no, we're gonna keep it, and that is well-used. The Clark House, I know in the past there's talk, let's get rid of it, we don't need it, it's gonna cost money to fix it. Well, from what I understand, the schoolhouse and the Clark House could use some work, are you gonna sell that too? Other things like the sewage plant, talking about a waste of money going back when things failed, when it was down around Lang Pond, I don't understand it, having to get land for Tuft and Borough, something fell apart there, and that cost us more money. There's got to be more, better spending and maintain. I mean, I pay taxes every year and vote for, is it $800,000 for maintenance every year? I thought it was to maintain the buildings. Well, no, we're not maintaining any buildings. And it's like, what other buildings we get that are falling apart? We renovated this, how much money's been spent on maintenance? But nobody can answer that. So you have to start following through. When the budget failed last year, I heard secondhand that there was one selectman was shocked, and it's like, oh, they don't like what we're doing. Well, no, we don't. But you've got to be more accountable, or you've got to find the people to be more accountable. So if the Parks and Rec are gonna be in charge of buildings, how much in that new hut have they spent on maintenance? You know, someone, I don't know if that comes to Jim, he works with all the little departments, I want to see breakdowns of how much they spent on maintaining the buildings we have. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Phil Holbert, also known as Phil Blodgett, because I'm married to Anne, I've been married to her for 39 years next year. And I think maybe you would understand that her grandfather, in advance of the Depression in 1929, cashed in some stock and reserved that and bought his land on Lake Wentworth. And that started our family owning land on Lake Wentworth that he bought. He was lucky to figure out that there was gonna be a depression. There's lots of talk about a depression coming in '30 to '32 now, 100-year depression. So I'll try to talk up so everybody can hear me. But I just want to, I think everybody in that room would like to give Anne a round of applause because she's put her heart and soul into doing this. And she loves this town more than she loves me. So the point is that she really wants to see we could do better. And most of you know that I'm in the leadership business, I've been coaching CEOs for years and so forth, and if I could be a resource in helping you navigate some of this, I'd raise my hand to, you know, be a participant at some level. So thank you, Anne, you did a great job tonight, you rallied your troops.
Thanks again for your attention and action.
So I have a lot of hope for Wolfboro. I've done a little research lately, Catherine Dragonfly has helped me, and I've looked at pictures of Wolfboro in the '70s, '80s, '90s, 2000s. And I see things like, at one time, there was a gas station on Cape Park, and there was three other broken-down gas stations in town, and the Yum-Yum Shop was a gas station. And there was a car dealership at Durgan Stables. And there was, in the '70s, where Foss Field is, there was two dumps, for lack of a better word, landfills on both sides, where Harvest Market is on one side and where the car wash is on the other side. So with a lot of hard work by people in town, we've come a long way. We have a long way to go, but we've come a long way. We can do better. I will say this, just because I'm a numbers guy and I have to look at numbers, I did find out that for tax burden on the citizens in towns, the state ranks it. There's 219 ranked towns in the state. Wolfboro's tax burden on its citizens is 32. So we have a fairly low tax burden compared to other cities. Does that mean it's good? Nope. I'm not saying it's good, I'm not saying we can't do better. I'd like to be number one, that would be a great thing. So what I would like to say tonight is, I'd like to ask Anne if her... So what I would like to say tonight is, I'd like to ask Anne if her and I can sit down, and I wanna have, just for me, I wanna have an open house, where people come and I can sit and talk with people about all of this. Because this is a lot to digest in an hour here. It's a lot to see and to understand all of the deficiencies, and I wanna talk to people about them. So I'll have everybody at my house. I'll have everybody at the yacht club if they'll allow me. Or I'll pick any location, and as many citizens that wanna come and talk to me about this, I will have a roundtable for anybody who's interested. Not in the winter.
Since you mentioned mine, am I allowed to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe we get, maybe Citizens for Wolfboro has an open mic night every, you know, every other select board meeting with a 30-minute limit, because the public comment section is so limiting and so, in such a, you know, uninspiring kind of location in the meeting that I think if people know they can come and have a safe place to inform you and you inform us, I think that would be helpful. But I do think overall, the town needs strategic help. So I think talking is great. We've all been talking for two and a half years. So, and I know, I'm gonna give you an example. In, I think it was December of '24, Mr. O'Brien was good enough to put forth a list of goals for you guys. How are you doing on that?
We've gotten, I would say, a third of them off. Third of them have been completed. Some are in progress still.
So maybe we just need to keep having a dialogue, and that will help other people who are watching at home to see what's going on. Maybe that will help your communication, I don't know. I mean, you guys are leading us, you're making the decisions on maintaining buildings. We don't, when we go, when we look at a warrant article about a maintenance issue, I'm not educated about that building, you guys are. So if it's a warrant article and you're leaving the choice to us, I think that's a slippery slope.
So I'd like to address one thing you said about we've come a long way since the '70s. And you're right, you're right. I was up here in the '70s. I remember the car dealership at Durgan Park, and I remember the broken-down gas stations and all that. But my question to you is, at what cost have we made these improvements? Okay, what is the debt load of Wolfboro? How much money have we borrowed? What do we have outstanding in terms of bonds? Does anybody know the answer to that question?
Yeah. You wanna get it, or?
Yes, somebody has it.
Just give me a minute to dig through my paper.
Just round numbers, Brian, Paul.
Excuse me?
40 million, 50 million, 60 million?
Let me just launch this. This internet connection doesn't work, what the hell's going on? I create a dashboard each year with the help, and I share it with my colleagues with the help of our finance minister. And this dashboard is what I call unimpeachable information, because it comes right off the audit. So if it's wrong, we're screwed, okay? And I have, I try to, I try to manage my life, because I've done these things before, with like four simple charts. So on the dashboard that I have, which is our annual appropriations, budgets, net debt by fund, we're currently carrying $31 million as of the '24 audit. We don't have '25 data, because... Of that $31 million, 21, 4 is sitting in the general fund, fire, police, debt for, some contribution of debt for the pop. 2.3 million is in the water fund. 3.1 million is in sewer. An allocation of debt over to the Pop Whalen is 650. But a total of 31, and the electric fund, Barry's business, 3.6 million. You were asking the question a little earlier about, how come I keep paying more money over time when the default budget occurs? Well, one of the things we have to do is we have to tell the state how much money we've levered this town up by debt. And by the way, our annual mortgage payment, if you will, is like 2.7 million bucks, all funds. 2.7 goes out the doors of mortgage payment. And it'll be 2.9 in 2025. So we have to go to the state and say, we've borrowed more money, and some of those bonds are coming due. And the state comes back to us and says, and you can put that in your default budget, because you can't not pay your debt. And so debt has increased, from 2021 to today, debt has increased 34%, total capital debt. Big years were, you asked, and might maybe tell you more than you wanna know. The big years were, as you folks all know, when we funded the pop and when we funded the public safety building. Even though we had, you know, pretty substantial donations coming in from people, we had to fund it, because the state expects us to do that. I don't know if that answered your question, but...
Well, I guess the point that I was trying to make was that annually, when we have the deliberative session, you present the budget, and I look at the budget, I see the, if not the biggest, one of the largest line items on the budget is debt service, which is 2.7, 2.9 million dollars. The general fund tends to be roughly, if I remember correctly, about $15 million. So if you're paying $3 million in debt out of 15, that's a fifth. I mean, you're basically, you've gone into debt. It's like you mortgaged the future, so you have to continue to increase taxes to pay for the money that you've already spent in the past. So the money that you need to spend now and in the future isn't available unless you raise taxes. So when people keep asking, why aren't we doing the maintenance? The answer is, you don't have the money, because you've already spent the money.
Borrowed money.
All of it, quite a while ago. I mean, when I first got back here from Virginia and I saw the public safety building going up, I said, damn, they finally decided to build a Hampton Inn. You know, I mean, that's what it looks like, it looks like a Hampton Inn. And it's like, then I found out, no, that's the new police station, oh, great. So, you know, that was $14 million, that's a pretty big slug. And I think last time I was here and speaking, I happened to mention that that is roughly one year's property tax revenue. I mean, it's 15 million bucks is about what you collect in property taxes, the general fund, and you spent $14 million on a building. That's why you don't have the money to do maintenance. That's why the Libby's gone by the wayside. Which, by the way, I don't understand the whole Libby thing, because I was one of the people that offered up money to support the Libby, and I made a pledge that if it were to pass, I would donate X amount of dollars. And I made that pledge. I was surprised it didn't pass, because you were offered $2 million. Essentially, that was a good deal. You didn't take it, you didn't support it. And then a year and a half later, two years later, I hear you wanna spend $4.3 million to rehab that place on Lainer Street. I'm going, wait a minute. You just turned down the Libby and you were offered $2 million. Now you're coming back with a proposal to put in a new building on Lainer Street for $4.3 million. And I think I actually said that that's an insane decision. And I stand by that, that's insanity right there. But anyway, I think that the problem is, we've borrowed too much. We've spent too much in the past, so I agree with you, we've come a long way. But at what expense? We've mortgaged the future in order to pay for what we've purchased in the past. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Burnett-Cury. I'm gonna be run out of here on a road track. I'm gonna remind us all that we voted for these things. We voted to accept the Libby. We voted to accept the Clark House. We voted to move the buildings to the Clark Museum. We voted to build a new police fire station. We voted to have a new ambulance service. We voted for these things. I don't think it's fair to keep saying, you did this, you did that, you brought us down this path, it's not fair. Now, you can suggest that we haven't maintained it, and to some extent, that's somebody's responsibility, because we don't know all the nuances of the buildings. But we've voted for all of this debt that we have. And it's actually not a disproportionate amount of debt for the size town. If you look at what we're eligible to borrow, it's substantially less than that. And if you look at our town, we all, we're talking about a ski area. How many towns are responsible for a ski area? We're talking about an indoor ice skating rink. How many towns in New Hampshire have responsibility for an indoor ice skating rink? We voted to have those things. And the Clark Museum complex, and the Limbee Museum complex. We can't keep saying this is their fault if we in fact supported these things along the way, and we have. And I think it's a disservice to everybody in this room to make it sound, given the fact that we have these resources that are well beyond, and on top of it, we have others. Our Parks Department does cemeteries. How many Parks Department in New Hampshire manage their cemeteries? How many of them have three beaches? How many of them have five parks? How many of them have nature trails? And how many of them have a ski area and an indoor rink? And all the other resources that we have. I think we have to keep this in perspective, and we've gotten a little bit ahead of blaming and not taking our own responsibility. And yes, you can head me now out of the...
I don't wanna lose focus here, and yes, that's right. People before us voted, things were voted in. But if somebody votes in a building and you let it fall down, I mean, I just, that just doesn't add up for me. I think the focus of tonight is, how can we make the existing resources work better? How can we spend smarter? How can our employees, Jim's employees, have a better work environment, more equity? I mean, I just think there's some processes here. Recruiting, is this challenge? Exit interviews, do we have them? Do we have employee reviews every year?
Yep.
Is everybody getting the same raise, or are they merit-based?
Same.
Why is that?
The way we've done business, Anne.
Not always. The rest of the world doesn't work that way, so anyway. I think processes, how everybody works together, how can the resources be used better? How are the tax dollars be spent better? I mean, I think that's what this is all about. Not blaming, we didn't come here to blame, but I think people did have a lot of pent-up frustration. So thanks for letting them share it.
Mike Barton, 30-year permanent, full-time resident of New Hampshire, Wolfboro, love it here. For those, Phil, speaking to you and others who've been out in the bigger corporate United States of America world, this warrant article is basically asking you to bring scrutiny on yourself, and that's hard to ask anybody to do. But the best performing organizations in America are those that invite scrutiny. The worst performing ones are those that hide from it. Thank you.
Okay, I agree with that lady that was up here, two people ago, that it's not your fault, really. We did vote it in. However, I do hold you responsible in that when you put forth these warrant articles, it's a little deceptive, okay? When you say, you know, if we borrow this amount of money, it's gonna cost zero on your taxes for the first year, zero on your taxes in the second year, and three cents in the third year, until the bonds come due, and then it'll cost you $2.7 million a year. So that's a little bit deceptive in doing that. And that's all I have to say about that. I mean, we did vote it in, we, the people, voted it in, but some of us think it doesn't cost anything to borrow money. Why? I don't, I can't figure that one out. But some people actually believe that when you say it costs you zero on your tax bill if we borrow this money, they think that goes on in perpetuity. It doesn't. And what people need to realize is, when the bill comes due, your taxes are gonna go up. I used to live in Fairfax County, and that was the big thing. Oh, if we borrow this, it won't cost you anything. And everybody says, well, it doesn't cost anything, so we're gonna give the county this, pass this bill. I'm going like, you must be an idiot if you think that you can borrow money and never have to pay it back and your taxes won't go up to pay it back. You're dreaming. Yeah. Smoking a lot more than pot, I'll tell you that. So...
To answer one of your questions, the warrant article for the Libby renovation and expansion in 2020, it received the popular vote of 756 yes and 547 no. But that was one of those questions, because they decided to bond it, that they had to get 60% to pass it. So that's, it was favorable, but it passed. The other thing is, and I use the Libby as an example, they didn't go out and sell it, because somebody decided to do two back-to-back multimillion-dollar warrant articles. And that was in the mix, and of course, it didn't prevail. They're better salesmen than we are purchasers.
We keep getting lost with this vote, that date, this money. All the numbers are very confusing. But I want to remind everybody that these are first-world problems. We are very, very privileged to live in this town. And when we vote each spring for you guys, we vote with the confidence that you are gonna be good caretakers. That's all any of us are. We're just on this planet to take care of things for future generations. And I think it's become pretty clear tonight that we need to stay focused. I think an outdoor, you know, an outside company, not MRI, but some other company could teach us a lot. So please just keep focused.
Carol McMahon again, but I recall several meetings ago, John said that he had been trying to, trying to get a maintenance manager to be in charge of maintaining the buildings, and it never happened. And this is what has happened from that not happening. And the community center and the Libby and the whatevers are a perfect example of that building. And so hopefully, we're gonna be able to renovate the community center and not... And so, hopefully, we're gonna be able to renovate the community center and not spend $4 million later in the future. But I agree, we need somebody to be in charge, one person or one department to be in charge of maintenance.
Okay, I'd like to bring this to a conclusion if we can. I, for one, am not ready tonight, because we just got all of this information, and I wanna go through it some more. Not opposed to the concept, not at all. But I don't know how the rest of you feel tonight on that. So, I'd like to hear quickly some input if we can. Paul?
I didn't hear any blaming. I didn't hear anybody blaming us. You're legitimately concerned, and that's okay. What I heard, from my background, is, "We really don't understand how you spend money. We don't understand how you fix stuff. We don't understand how you set priorities. We really don't understand how you manage your people. And we really sure as hell don't understand what outcomes I'm getting for the buck I send in." That's kinda what I heard. And I'm not trying to be cavalier, but I try to put things at least in those, some places in here. I believe that, unless the board, you know, has an objection, I believe that, and I can't make a decision tonight either, I won't. But I believe we should commit ourselves to spend an hour at our next board meeting to really answer your question. I think that's, to me, that's how I would recommend we do it. We should take the time, and we can't, you know, we can't get together privately in kibbits, because that's not proper. But I wanna take the time to think about it, and I wanna spend an hour dedicated just to answer the question. You have spent a lot of time, and I'm not trying to be political here, you've spent a lot of time writing up these positions. I've seen the petitions, I've seen Ann in front of the coffee shop, a lot of times, with her little clipboard. She never bought me a cup of coffee, but I've seen her schlepping this. I've been asked to meet with people who came to the microphone tonight, whose names I won't mention because it's just private between myself and them. I think we have some work to do in the code area, planning area, and the way in which we manage the business. And this is a business. It's a, it's a $40 million business. And I think we have a responsibility to answer your question. So I'm gonna ask if the board doesn't object, and we carve out an hour.
Yeah, I wanna thank people for coming tonight and talking to us. That's what we need to hear. We need to hear from you on how you feel about how we've put warrant articles out, decisions that we made, so we can look at a better way, if we can find one, to move forward. I do wanna think about this, but my first gut feeling is, I don't have any problem bringing a consultant in here to look at what we've done, or whether we could do it differently, or in a different manner. If we can all grow together in doing that, then we will all win. I will go back and read it, but thank you, thank you for taking the time. We've been here a long time and letting us hear how you really feel about how things are going in this town.
Brian?
I'm gonna go back to what I said before. I need to talk to everybody who did this. That's how I learn, that's how I understand. When, when we had an issue with the rotaries, I talked to 300 or 400 people in town, and they educated me. I need to be educated on this. I need to, that's just me, that's the way I do things. I sit in a group, and I talk to a lot of people, and I hear all the different perspectives, and it's not in a formal situation like this where sometimes you, you're not, you can't have the same intimate conversations as you can in this formal meeting. So I would like to, I still, I will find a place, and I will have a roundtable for any citizen who's part of this group, or any citizen in town who wants to come talk to me about the problems in town, and I will answer the questions I best I can. The ones I don't know, I will write down, and I will find answers for people. If I can do it at one of the meetings, that would be great, but again, if it's a formal meeting with just one person at a mic at a time, I work better in a roundtable environment. I work better when a whole group of people can all converse. And if that can work at their meeting, I would love to come to a meeting and do it in that fashion. So again, I'm reaching out to Ann and saying, "Ann, set something up to help me."
Okay.
Absolutely.
John?
So I appreciate all of you, because I was once one of you, sitting there, doing the same thing. That's why I'm sitting here now. Because you can't sit on the couch and not participate. Because if you're gonna make a change, you have to be here to participate. That's the number one. But honestly, I think that, I think the towns had their head in the sand for a long time, seriously. We get, we get asked to do things, it gets brushed off, we don't address the issue, and then we come to town meeting, we get the warrant articles, we chip through them, we vote on them, and then, like Sebastian says, we see zero impact, zero impact, zero impact. And thanks to Suzanne for coming to the microphone three meetings ago and saying, "The new law is, you gotta tell what's happening in five years." I mean, I'm a thinker, I listen, I don't forget. When you grow up around here, you know you had nothing, and now you've got something. And all of you, and me, and these people here, will benefit, and so will the future. When you say something, we need to be able to say, "Okay, this is where it's gonna go. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about it, we're gonna fix it, and then we're gonna be able to give you an answer, what happened. Maybe we won't be able to fix it, but at least we'll be able to give you an answer." When people have concerns, we need to be thoughtful about the solution. We know, we know we can't impose stuff on people that doesn't make sense. We need to take care of our infrastructure, we need to take care of our roads. That was our job originally, traditionally. Our job was roads. Then it blossomed into administrative, and then it blossomed into more buildings. How do you take care of the buildings? No, you don't let them fall for dead. I agree. I did make the motion in 2019 on master plan facilities. I interviewed and went through all the town buildings. I wrote the reports with Mike Harder. We didn't do anything. We proposed a facilities manager. It came to the select board, didn't happen. So what you are all saying is all valid. How we go about getting somebody to come tell us how an outsider looks at things would be how we're not doing things right now, and you would say, "Are we doing things the way we've always done them? Obviously, we probably should, we should change that aspect, we should do things differently." Nobody's gonna have the right answer, and sometimes what they might say is, "We might not like that answer." And we, we're gonna have to pay for that, too. That's the other problem. We run so skinny with the numbers, and our debt, and our employees are like 70% of our total budget. What's left? Not very much. And then when you come to us and say, "Our taxes are going up," I agree with you, my taxes are going up, too. There's a balance. We have to find that balance, and this board here has to say just what you said, it's not a competition. But when somebody says something, when you grow up in life and you, and you might get divorced, you look back and reflect and say, "Would I have done something different?" And then you say, "Well, I might have been, might have been able to live with that," rather than complaining about it or holding the wall up. So I think we've got a lot, a lot of work to do. I think it starts right here with the town manager. I'd like him to see, see him do his job, and us poke him less, and allow him to do his job. That way, we know he's doing his responsibility. That's, that's my point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ann. We sit, well, Charles, I'm gonna start very quickly. I'm sure one or two of us can talk to each other, but that would be in a meeting, so some of this could be straightened out pretty well, very quickly. So, I think, at this point, nobody has anything else, and move on with our agenda. Next on our agenda is the discussion, lease Friends of Kingswood Hockey.
Can I get clarity here? If we're talking about a lease, I will step down. If it's just a report, I will stay seated.
I'd like to just give a report.
Okay.
Thank you. If that's okay.
Yep.
So, good evening, members of the Select Board, my name is Justin Brown.
Justin, can you just pull the mic up? Thanks.
It's hard to tell up here.
It is.
Okay. This is good?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Friends of Kingswood Hockey, and we're excited to enter our third season supporting Kingswood Boys and Girls Hockey programs. We wanted to share an update on our progress and highlight what we have planned for the upcoming year. Over the past year, we've had several major accomplishments that we're proud of. Our custom-made Kingswood hoodies and our collectible season patches have remained extremely popular, popular. We hosted a highly successful Bruins alumni game, and our Super Bowl Squares fundraiser was another big win, just to name a few. We also launched a new home game program booklet, which featured local business sponsors and was a huge success, and we're excited to expand on that again this year. One accomplishment that especially highlights our community mission is that we purchased and donated brand-new K2 skates, sorry, it's late, so the area schools could continue using Popwellen Ice and Art Center for their winter sports program. That investment supports youth athletics regionally and ensures continued access to our community rink. My understanding is that more schools, more than ever, are using the rink this year for their winter program. We are proud to share that, to date, we've contributed $123,151 towards our long-term fundraising goal of $250,000. That's about 49% of our goal, and puts us ahead of schedule. And of course, we are thrilled to celebrate the success of our teams last season, the girls reaching the quarterfinals, and the boys making a spectacular run at the championship game. Amazing job, both teams. Looking ahead, we have 10 girls' home games and nine boys' home games this season. We hope the community will come out, pack the pop, and enjoy high-quality local hockey. We're also thrilled that students from Plymouth have joined the girls' team, helping to ensure continued strong participation. The Bruins Alumni Game will return again this year on February 7th. We are actively looking for players, sponsors, and auction items for the after-party, and we love the community involvement. We are expanding our home game program booklet, distributed free at every game, and businesses can purchase, it's gonna be a full-size sheet, so quarter page, half page, or a full-page ad. And this year, family and friends can also purchase space to have a personal tribute message to their favorite player. Season patches are available for sale now, as well as the hooded sweatshirt, which makes a great gift and is really hot in the great hall.
Putting in a plug for the swag.
Makes a great gift for upcoming holidays. We continue to welcome additional sponsors at the rink in the way of the banners and the dashboard boards, which are a key support for our program. And we are also seeking game sponsors for the upcoming season. We invite everyone to visit friendsofkingswoodhockey.org, which I think is a typo in the packet that I provided you, by the way. So it's friendsofkingswoodhockey.org, as well as our social media pages for information on how to get involved. We are grateful for the continued support of the Town of Wolfboro, and we're looking forward to another exciting and successful year with Kingswood Hockey. Go Knights! If you have any questions.
Brian?
The fundraising that you're paying, who are you paying back for the, with the fundraising, the $250,000?
The Friends of Popwellen is, my understanding is that the debt to the town has been paid by Friends of Pop, and we are paying Friends of Pop back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Next on our agenda is unassigned fund balance. Okay, so Sam's gonna be handing out a document. We're still working on getting the tax rate set going forward. In front of you is a memo that outlines various usages of the unassigned fund balance. As you may recall, the policy indicates that we should maintain no greater than 10% of the operating budget. You have the formula in front of you of different options to buy down the tax rate for 2025. Right now, the estimate, if you were to use no fund balance, which we currently have $5.9 million worth of, if you were to use none, the estimated tax rate would be $3.56. If you were to use $1 million of unassigned fund balance, the tax rate would be $3.35 per thousand. And if you use 1.25 million of unassigned fund balance, the tax rate would be $3.30 per thousand. And let me just be clear, that's on the town portion only. We're still waiting for the school district to get their formula complete with DRA. At that point, we should have a tax rate, and we're hopeful, if not by the end of this week, early next week. Sam, anything you'd like to add to this?
Just a quick, Jim, just a quick question. Do we have to wait for the county as well, or that comes later?
I think the county's already got their paperwork in with DRA.
Okay, so we're waiting for the school.
The village district is all set. I spoke to our DRA representative this week. The school department has submitted their paperwork, it has now been forwarded to the Department of Education, so that it can get apportioned over all the communities that make up the school district.
But the local school district hasn't.
No.
So this is, so this is for the second half of this year, this impact?
Yes, this will be the tax rate when the tax bill is sent out, just as soon as we get a rate.
And it also does July, I mean, the following year. That's the year.
So when we, so it'll be all the way up till July? So when we vote in March on the warrant articles, those won't impact until after July?
Those won't impact until this time next year, when we're setting the tax rate. The tax rate is always adjusted in the fall of the year to accommodate what the voters approved on the warrant.
So for, just if I could, for people out there, we're having a conversation right now about using our unrestricted fund balance to do a one-time prospective buy-down of the tax rate, which is a good thing. The question that we have to decide is, how much should we take out of it, given a lot of uncertainty or things that could happen? And there's some uncertainty. So that's the conversation we're about to get into a little bit here. Okay?
Some of the factors, or a big one, is the increase in health insurance. And people were asking, why, from one year of a default budget to the next year, does our, their taxes still go up? Well, we have to follow state regulations and honor increases in wages and adjustments for all town employees and contracts that we have that are multi-year contracts. So when that number goes up, we have to pay it, and...
For union contracts.
Yes. For union contracts.
Yep.
And so, there is, there... And so, there is, there, there's really no way the state will not allow us to not honor adjustments, wage adjustments for union employees and contracts and other things that we have that we have to pay. So, that's why one year things cost more than another year, and there still is an increase in the budget.
All right, Sam.
Sam, are you, what are you gonna say before we talk?
Oh, no, I, Jim pretty much summed it up.
Okay, 'cause one of the things I did, I was trying to get my head around, you know, whether we should go to the 10% per what the warrant article said, or if we do, uh, 1.2, it's 12%. And I went back and looked at, and I did just the cash. When we pass warrant articles, there are a couple that are bonded, but the rest are in cash. In 2019, it was 2.5. In 2020, it was 1.1. In 2021, it was 2,200. Um, in 2022, it was 4 million. In 2023, it was 3.1. In 2024, it was back to 2. And I, and in 2025, it will be, uh, one, it was 1 point, I mean, it was 3.1. And so, I took Mr. Pino's number ones, and I've got a question before I go on. I didn't see the purchase of a new ambulance, and I couldn't make the warrant article that you have here match with what we told the, um, taxpayers it was gonna cost. So, I understood coming out of the CIP that a new ambulance was gonna be $650,000.
Yeah, that's correct, but that has no impact on the unassigned fund balance.
No, I'm looking at the number of warrant articles we have to put out. In my understanding, we have to put out a warrant article for a new ambulance.
Correct.
It's not in the 1 million for the fire, rescue, ambulance staffing.
It will be. That, right now, it is. But I...
Not in relationship, we told the taxpayers that it was going to be 1.4 million, and I don't see the, and what you have is 1 million, so I can't make those two match. I brought the slip.
You're saying the 108.3 should include or shouldn't include?
That figure does not include.
Does not include.
And we still need a 650 warrant article for a new ambulance.
Right.
So, I added that in, so just, and if, I think I'm correct on that, that one, if we do just his number ones, it would be 3, 3.5 million. So, then I started taking, um, a million, a million 200,000, and then a 1.9 million. And my only concern, my concern with going to the 10% is we're gonna drop our cash down so low, and then the following year, it's just gonna go way up. And so, that concerns me. If you, if we, if the cash for 2025 is, that we spent, that the voters approved, is 1, a 3.1. And if we take that down by another 2 million, it would only be 1.1. And then in 2026, it's gonna be 3.5. That's a long, large difference between what we're paying in cash, because there's no bonded warrant article this year. So, what we're asking in cash, if we use all this to bring down the tax rate, the tax rate's gonna take a big spike the next year. That's what I'm pointing out. So, we may gain this year, but we're going to have a big problem come the following year. And so, while I, my main feeling is voters told us to go to 10, we should go to 10%. But the impact to the following year, I really question.
Agreed, and, you know, I think that our recommendation to you initially in this memo was not to utilize more than 1 million. I've highlighted the 1.25 because I think that's the sweet spot between, um, all of And it's a matter of, as well, understanding that there's a strong possibility that a lot of the revenues that we're used to receiving from the state of New Hampshire, we may not be receiving next year, um, and we won't know that until this time next year. Rooms and board, meals, taxes, those types of things, where are we gonna be with those next year? Don't know. So, finding that sweet spot, to be able to have a, a fund balance healthy next year to be able to buy down some of the tax rate as well, is important.
So, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm still not sure, Linda, I, I understand where you're going. Here, try, let me try my side of it and see how it works. So, right, right now, we're sitting at 5.9 million at the bottom right-hand corner of the balance sheet. Okay? That's, that's what's on the audit, 5.9.
We're, we're looking at what we're doing for the next year that isn't on the audit.
No, I know, I understand. But I'm just, I'm just kinda walking through Sam's, uh, documents she provided us. And we're suggesting that we need to, we need to go get $377,000 from the permission to spend, uh, out of that 5.9 million because of the insurance little memo we got several weeks ago. Plus another 175, is that the, uh, hydrant?
No, that is the overlay for next year.
An overlay, okay. So, that nets to 5.3 million, and, and I think this is where you're going. If we put out a warrant article for an ambulance, you're saying that's gonna draw down what cash?
No, I'm, I'm saying when I, he put out the estimated, um, warrant articles, the ambulance, the new ambulance is not included. I went back to the warrant article that we told the taxpayers last year it was gonna be 1.4, and it included an ambulance. I don't see, and it says, um, is for fire and rescue ambulance staffing at 1 million. I don't see the ambulance there.
I agree with that.
Okay, so that was my kind, what I did is I looked, I took only his number ones, put in the ambulance, and that, and they're no bonded, so we're, it's gonna be cash. So, it's going to hit that year. When you get a bond, you don't feel the impact till the following year in the operating budget when the, you have to pay the interest in, uh, principal.
See, I, I looked at it a little different, and maybe I was wrong. It says fire, rescue, ambulance slash staffing, and I thought maybe that the 600,000 was built into it and the staffing number had gone down.
Well, then, we really gave out the wrong information last year because we told them it's gonna be 1.4, and that's the reason it jumped out at me.
And I, I would also say that, uh, it is asterisk that we're still reviewing the finances. I have a meeting with the chiefs tomorrow to go over this particular article, um, so hopefully I'll be more informed when we sit down and discuss warrant articles.
But what came out of the CIP was $650,000 for a new ambulance?
Correct.
All right? And when you did this, is the 1 million including that purchase of the new ambulance?
I don't have that in front of me. I can't recall right off the top of my head.
Okay, to me, it seemed like it wasn't. I could be wrong, but I don't see, it doesn't, 1 million doesn't fall in line with what we told in the warrant article. I was just trying to get what we were asking the voters in cash.
What we want them to pay for.
What we're asking them to pay for, yes.
And what I'm having trouble is, and I agree with that, if, if that number of 108 is short by whatever the, whatever the ambulance cost is, that's, that's on the capital side. What I'm looking over here is when, when we ring out all the, all the revenues and costs, we currently have 5.363 million dollars down at the lower right-hand corner of the balance sheet. And, and the recommendation or the thought is, could we take some of that 5.3 million dollars and 1.25 and use that as a one-time to buy down the tax rate?
Right, and what I'm playing with here is, I did it in another way. I looked at what we asked for cash, and then I took that down by 2 million if you did the 1.9. And then I'm looking at what we're asking for cash this year, the discrepancy is huge. So, the tax rate this year will drop, but the next year, it's gonna have to go up quite a bit, the difference between the two numbers. And I am saying, okay, if we do the 10%, we're setting that up, and that's what concerns me. All right? And so, I'm saying, well, let's take a look at, if we do this, this year, how is it gonna affect the tax rate the next year?
And I think that's why Jim was saying the sweet spot is 1.25 instead of, um, 1.99.
I, I know that, but we have a warrant article with the voters voted in, and that's what I'm trying to say, okay, I hear they voted it in, but look what this sets up. And I'm not sure they were in, looking at setting something up of that nature. That's why I'm making the comment, because if we listen to the public, we would take 10%. I think this where it comes to, we need to use our judgment because of the circumstances that we find ourselves in and the big discrepancy where you can lower one year and you're gonna spike the next. That's my point.
So, if we, let me, help me with this one, Linda. If we, uh, if, if we didn't have any you-know-what's happening to us, um, but we just made a correction, if the correction is required, of putting in an additional 800,000 in, what you're saying is that 800,000 is gonna come back around next year and have a, have a, obviously have a negative impact on the tax rate because nothing is gonna shield that 800,000. It's gonna just come right out of ultimately the unrestricted fund balance?
No, it'll come out of, I'm looking at the tax rate. If I look, if we're saying in the tax rate for 2025, there's gonna be 3.1 million in cash, all right? And instead of having them pay that, we're gonna drop it down by just about 2 million, which is, that's gonna make it 1 million over. I turn around and go look at the number based on just level one of the ones he gave us, and I get 3.5. That's a huge difference, so that's going to move the tax rate up because the tax rate is based on what you're spending.
So, I'm gonna do this in a different manner. I'm gonna do the actual impact. $3.56 on a $300,000 house is $1,068. The 3.35 on a $300,000 house is $1,005. And the tax rate at 3.30 is $990 on a $300,000 house.
You might wanna make it more like a $500,000 house. There's not, there's not a lot of $300,000 houses left. I, I, I agree with you.
I'm just, I'm trying to use the, in the range, so they can, they can multiply however they want. But there again, it's gonna double because you got the school funding aspect too, so you're gonna add...
Well, well, we're just talking about the town section. Most of our tax rate isn't related to our spending. That's the reality, you know? So, but those numbers for next year, if we use it, are going to go way up.
But, but what I'm trying to show is, if we take a million, too, we're, you're saving, like, $78 off of, of a $300,000 house. That's, that's, that's reality.
I, I'm not, I'm looking at the fact that we had a warrant article that told us to take 10%. That's what I'm pointing with.
I'm with you. You're, you're, you're doing something totally different than what I'm doing, but I'm, but we're in the same, we're in the same group.
Does the board agree? The warrant article?
Yes, go ahead. If they, if, the board agrees.
What if we didn't?
It's just one clarification. On this 10%, it says an amount no greater than 10%. So, you could do 5% this year, and if you're gonna get that hit that you're worried about the following year, then you do 10, up to 10%.
10% is 2 million. If we take 10%.
It's up to 10. You could do 5% to lower the tax.
Right, but, well, yes, we could take, yes, we could take...
Pay less, so you're not gonna have that spike you're worrying about.
But if we take 1.2, which is less than the 10, it's gonna be 12%.
Well, but...
I'm looking at your percentage.
But you can only go up to 10%, but you can do less than 10%.
We're going over 10%.
You should go under 10%.
Well, that's what I'm bringing the issue with, because when we do, then we set this up.
Do you have the warrant article right there? Can I read it?
I was gonna say, the warrant article is written...
Yeah. Which one is it?
Like, I think there's some confusion.
This one?
Yeah.
She is.
All right, "To see if, to see if the town will vote to reaffirm the 2002 warrant article, 16. Surplus policy each year the town shall reduce the surplus general fund, undesignated fund balance carryover from the prior year to an amount no greater than 10% of the operating budget voted the current year by applying the excess as fund balance, as, as fund balance to reduce taxes and further set amount to reduce taxes shall be affirmed, disclosed, and voted by the Board of Selectmen at a regular board meeting." Now, I wanna give a little clarification. That's a good number, that 10%. But the New Hampshire Governing, Government Finance Officers Association recommends that we should keep a balance between 5 to 15%, so 10's right in the middle, and the New Hampshire Department of Revenue says 5 to 17%, which would make it fall about 11% in the middle. So, I understand what the warrant article is. They want us to keep a 10% balance and no more than a 10% balance. But, um, the state recommends up to 17 or up to 15, and that's based on what you see as future expenses that are coming out that you know of, which is what Linda's talking about. So, I, I understand, and I think if we give back money and bring us down to 12% and explain to the citizens that the reason we're keeping the 12% is to keep from having a spike the following year...
That's what I'm talking about.
And to pay for things that we know are coming down the pike to us, I think we've honored the, the idea, the spirit or the idea of the warrant article, and we've explained that we're doing the, the best we can, and we're falling way, well within the, the government finance and the DRA associations. That's my take.
Sam, how are we doing?
Wonderful.
Just checking.
I don't... I believe we, that we're gonna need more information from Jim before we make...
We need to get the decision made if we wanna get a tax rate out.
That's why I turned around and did all this today, trying to get a good handle on exactly what we were looking at in terms of lowering one and raising another.
Okay.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, these are estimated municipal tax rates.
Yeah, well, this is, also has some estimation today, yeah. It's just...
Directional.
Yeah.
So, that's, like, the, the community thinks sometimes they don't get all the information. Sometimes we're working with the same kind of information, stuff that isn't etched in stone, isn't finalized, isn't perfect, and we have to do the best we can.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, what do we, or, or maybe for Sam or for others, what do we, what do we think, worst case, I hate to do the worst case, but what do we think could be the calls on the, on the unassigned fund balance next year? I, you know, I, I just had a short conversation with my colleague. I haven't seen, heard, read, nobody's whispering in my ear, whether we're not gonna get another $377,000 memo. So, I, no one, and we're gonna go down and see the Secretary of State tomorrow, but I haven't seen a darn thing that says we, you know, you can be assured there's no more surprises. So, that's...
So that, that could be a big oops, all right? And that number could be somewhere between where we currently are and someplace else.
Well, and as I put into your memo, and when we had a discussion with legal counsel, one thing that we need to be concerned about is if for some reason our current provider were to close the doors, we need to be prepared with either three months of health insurance costs, which we have budgeted...
Right.
Or three months of claims, which we are working actively now to find out what those numbers are and be prepared to make up the difference if that, those claims are higher.
And just to, you know, maybe just if I could carry my question a little further. Those, those claims that we would have, let's assume that we had a, an upside down situation with a carrier, those claims could either come out of this unrestricted fund balance, which would take you a whole bunch of time to get to DRA to get this done, or I think, I think if I read Nathan's advice, his suggestion is we put another warrant out on to have those three months worth of prospective claims covered as a revolving account?
So we can either do it as a warrant article, or we can do what we're doing now and go to the state through the Budget Committee and ask for another over expenditure if we needed such.
Right, so we have two options. One is you could go to the state, and there's a process and all of that that you gotta go through. Meanwhile, people's claims go unpaid, 'cause it, hold on, well, whatever, is, is that process? Or you, or you set up a, a revolving account that, or some mechanism that anticipates that we might have a bad situation. Those are really the two options. One is a more tactical option, one is the strategic option of taking it out of your, out of your, off your balance sheet.
Yeah, but once you set that account up, it's there.
It's there.
Okay? I'm not saying that I wanna do 10%. I'm fine with 12. I'm just talking about why I wouldn't honor the warrant article, which is what they had asked us to do. And the reason is because I don't think it's in the best interest to have those, that spike the following year in the tax rate.
And I'm kinda, I'm kinda coming, coming around to the point a different way that says I wanna understand the risk that we could have on our, you know, on our fund balance, which also tells me that I think if I had to make a decision, I'd, I'd say 1.25 million, best case.
Yeah, I mean, there are other things. We could have catastrophic storms and washouts.
Yeah, we could have all of that.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of things that, that can happen, there are emergencies, and that's what the fund balance is for, is for emergency spending.
Well, we very rarely do emergency spending, so let's not get into that this is what we use, you know? We're in a health issue this time. We had an issue a couple of years ago, we, when we had the issue with the Pop Whalen and stuff. We went, got authorization, but we didn't have to use it because the thing about overspending the bottom line on your budget, you've gotta ask permission before you overspend. So we asked for permission and didn't need it. I think there was one other time that I, when I've been on the board, that we needed to.
I was sure, right?
It was something early on that we, we needed to do it, so it may have been the ice storm. There was something, something major had happened. So I don't want the public to think that we can just go overspend the bottom line anywhere we budget to go over the bottom line.
No.
So what do we wanna do?
I, we have to make it tonight. We wanna put something...
That's what I'm saying.
I, I'm comfortable with the 1.25. Again, i- if, if the citizens ask us, why are we at 12% and instead of 10%, I think we can explain it financially that it makes sense. And I think that by giving back 1.25 million to the taxpayers in, to lower the tax rate, I think honors the spirit of the warrant article.
Mr. Chairman, question. Linda, you, you, you looked back. What was the, what was the, the tap we did in 2020, 2020?
2020, it was 2.1 million was the cash figure.
There was one year that was 4.
That was in 2022, it was 4 million. That was the year we did the POP. Oh, that's the year there was all the ARPA money?
Right.
Okay? And so there was, there was 17, we, and I subtracted from the 17, the, the POP, because that ends up going in the, to the operating budget, 'cause it's a Warren article. And then there was 1.6, that was our Mill Street, and we haven't even bonded that one yet. There's 1.4 was Lainer Street. We paid for that all in cash.
So, yeah.
So there were those, so, so we came down to 4 million.
Explain what the two projects were, so people understand.
What two projects?
Lainer Street and...
They were, they're sewer pump stations.
Correct.
Yep.
So that people understand that it wasn't paving roads or...
Nope, those are, those are all...
Those were for sewer pump upgrades.
There's one other...
Are you making that a motion, Brian?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
I'll second.
I'll third it.
Hey. Is the motion the 2.5? Is that what I heard?
1.25.
I'm sorry, 1.25.
1.25, you're 12%.
Okay, I'm gonna apply that.
So the motion would be for the Select Board to affirm that we will utilize 1 point, well, $1,250,000 of the 2024 unassigned fund balance to reduce the 2025 tax rate.
Correct.
$2.30 a thousand.
Well, these are estimates.
These are just estimates.
These are estimates.
Spitballing right now.
Any, any further discussion? Callers in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that could be a one-time sexist term, good guy, on, on the tax bill.
Hey, next on our agenda is the Actual versus Budget, October.
Ready to go, Sam?
Actual versus budget for October. This reflects 10 months or 83% out of our budget year. As we're winding down, we are keeping a close eye on the budget, 'cause there are some areas that are very tight. I'll just go through per fund. General Fund, for expended only is at 82%. The revenues, they've collected 57%. This is low because when the second tax billing goes out, that's when we'll see a large amount of our revenue coming in. Water Fund, we are at 85% spent and 134% on the revenue side. Electric Fund is at 87% expended with 83% revenue received. Sewer Fund is 93% expended with 90% in revenue. And the Pop Whalen Fund has over expended at 1.19%. Revenues are closer to target with, on, closer to target at 81% received. Since our last meeting, we have awarded our Managed IT Services bid to Block Five, who is our current IT provider. So we are extending that contract for three years. And we have another RFP out now for our copier machines, and that will be opening on December But like I said, we're just closely monitoring everything as we're nearing the end.
Hey.
Yes?
I, I got a question for, maybe Jim will know, and I, I was, took a look at the sewer collection one because that expenses were so high. What, what machinery or equipment in there are we 137,271 over? Something must have...
So that was overages associated with Lainer Street that we had to cover in the operating budget? Really?
Oh, okay. That's Lainer Street.
Lovely.
That's twice we talked about that pump station.
We talked about Mill. We didn't talk about Lainer. We talked about Mill, and that's why I just, I just didn't know what it was. Thank you.
Yep, that's what it is.
Mill's not done.
Hasn't started, nope.
Yeah. But we've had to add money to it.
Yep. Any other questions for Sam on that?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. All right, so next on, on our agenda is discussion of water supply update.
So water supply, I can tell you that it has remained stable over the past two weeks at 38 inches below full reservoir. I will be forwarding off to you and hopefully getting on the website tomorrow, a graph chart that outlines three years' worth of history as to where the reservoir level is and was over those timeframes. And there's also a corresponding chart with rainfall totals, so you can see any of the adjustments associated with rainfall.
Did they ever find the paper on the safe yield? There was a thing...
Still, still looking. And along with those lines, relative to water is gonna be in my report to you, but right now they are out actively fixing a water main leak on Center Street at...
Was it by me or...
National ending. Thank you.
So, so your, so your water amount graph, is that gonna be for a long period or a, for a short period, where you can spread it out and actually see what the dips are for the...
I, I think it's a, I think it's a long period, John. I, I think it's for the full year. I, I haven't had a chance to really look at it, but my goal is to get it out to you guys tomorrow and then post it to the webpage.
So when I asked you last time, we had, we had a downdraft, and then we had a couple little blips.
Yep.
And that's what I asked you, how much of that blip equaled out to that amount of precipitation so that we could, we could gauge an inch storm, which is gonna give us this much lift on a level?
And I think once you see that, you'll be able to correlate the two because they're actually on the same chart. So you'll be able to see the two go across, then see an increase or corresponding, with corresponding rainfall.
Thank you.
And that was, that was Josh Thomas who did that. He did a great job with it, so.
Okay. Preliminary warrant out.
Okay, so in front of you, you have a, a series of warrant articles for consideration at this point. These are the cash warrant articles. I did go through and I prioritized them, one being high priority, four being of lower Of total on the general fund right now, $3,855,644 worth of warrant articles on the general fund, $452,000 under the water fund, $350,000 on the sewer fund, for a total of $4.65 million. Under the priority list, priority ones, I have listed at 2.56 million, priority twos, $873,000, priority threes, $150,000, and priority fours, $272,000. I don't expect us to go through these tonight, but what I'd like to be able to do is schedule a time for us to be able to sit down and go through these. As I indicated to you, I'll be sitting down with the fire chief and his team tomorrow to get more data around the ambulance moving forward with the addition of the staff that we removed from the operating budget.
And, you know, it's up to the rest of the board, of course, but some consideration prospectively about having a, some type of a revolving account unless Sam thinks she can get through DRA lickety-split if we have an unplanned event around insurance. If you think you can get through those folks lickety-split, great. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sis. If you think you can get through, then we would go back to the unrestricted fund balance. I just, you know, if you, you guys would sort that out and then give us a thought.
Yeah, I really need to see what those average of three months claims are before I can make that decision, but agreed.
Okay. I mean, personally for me, the best thing would be if we could get, if, if something happened, an unplanned event around healthcare, and we could get the funds released quickly, whatever the right term is, I wouldn't be supportive of asking the voters to pony up more money, but...
Yeah, I would also like to know, ponying up the money, which is a gamble, 'cause we don't know...
We don't know.
How we do it and how we would undo it if the catastrophe...
What do you mean by undo it?
Well, if in that year, the following year, we didn't need the money...
How do you give it back?
Yeah. How do you discontinue that revolving fund? Can you? Or are you gonna be stuck in there, or can you use that to pay something? I would like to know.
That's a fair question.
Yep.
We just, again, my, my, just my two sentences, I, I just don't see, can't feel, haven't heard, no one's told me. Maybe we'll learn more tomorrow when we talk to the Secretary of State. I don't know whether this is a one and done or we're gonna face another oops. So think about what we need to do here, okay?
So would you like to schedule a time to sit down and go through these?
Next board meeting. Yeah. Next board meeting.
I, I guess what I hear him saying, and I wonder whether the case, 'cause I've got all sorts of questions and I, I don't know unless we figure on counting an hour or so in a board meeting to do it. I've got a lot of comments and questions and...
Well, is there, once, I don't have the schedule...
December 1st or 2nd before the next board meeting?
I'm, I'm sorry for... I'm open to whatever you guys wanna do. If you guys, Monday and Tuesday next week for me is pretty wide open if you guys wanna do something then.
You got a hard stop on this stuff, right?
So the Budget Committee, based on their schedule right now, begin reviewing these December 17th.
All right, that's fine. Okay.
So you're saying on the 24th or 25th, you're okay?
I'm, I'm open.
I'm, I'm okay in the afternoon those days, not in the morning.
I can, I'll make it. I'll just move my schedule. Darn.
I'll, I'll move my...
I can do it in the afternoon. On Monday, I have to pick up my turkeys, so I cannot not do that.
How many turkeys?
There are some priorities.
How many turkeys you get?
I get two turkeys. Yeah.
Throw in another one.
Yeah.
So what do you wanna do next week?
Yeah.
Monday afternoon.
Yeah. John, what time works best for you? You're the one who's got, got more of a schedule than the rest of us.
Well, let's...
Yourself, yourself.
Well, you don't have a schedule. Yours goes all over the place.
How long is it, how long, are we, are we actually gonna meet later on after this meeting or for the goals and...
Yeah. We wanna, yeah.
Unless you wanna table that.
Or we could table that and add it to our work session.
That's what I'm thinking.
I think that's a real good thought.
Do it tonight?
Move it, 'cause we're almost, you know, we're 20 of 10, and if we did a meeting on Monday...
I could, I could do, I could do 2:00.
On Monday?
Yeah.
That would be good. I can get staff here and they can help to answer questions.
I can do it 2:00. I have a meeting with you guys at 4, right? Friends, meeting on Monday?
What time is the Friends?
4:30.
Suzanne?
I think it's 4:30.
It's, what time is your meeting on Monday with the Friends?
She's just looking with a blank stare, like...
No, it says, you said the 24th.
24.
Let's, let's do Monday. I thought you said you were meeting on the 24th at Julie Jacob's house.
Yeah.
Okay, so when's, when's the meeting then? Tomorrow?
4:30.
All right, so...
How about we meet Monday 2:00?
Monday the 24th, 2:00.
Monday the 24th at 2:00.
Yeah.
Capex, right? This is Capitol? Or, or did we flip around? Capitol, Monday?
We're, we're gonna do Warren Articles, which you call Capitol, and then we're going into non-public to do, to do goals.
All right, cool. Monday?
Monday.
2:00?
2:00.
And you're gonna get turkeys?
I'm gonna get my turkeys at 10:30. We're, we're going to do warrant articles, which you call Capitol, and then we're going into non-public to do, to do goals.
All right, cool. Monday?
Monday.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
And you're going to get turkeys.
I'm going to get my turkeys at ten thirty.
Well, then, we're all set.
I am going to get them cooked by two o'clock.
Yeah, how the hell are you going to get them all cooked up?
I'm cooking them on Thanksgiving.
Oh, all right. I thought you were bringing us turkey.
No, no, I, I am up here with some turkeys.
That's a very thoughtful comment.
I didn't...
True, but...
I, I didn't call anybody out, and if somebody speaks up, what can I do?
Oh, Jim, and I want, I wanted to do a correction, Jim. I made, I made an oopsie. I sent you the New Hampshire Revised Statute, Chapter six six, six five five, Section six five five, colon eighty-one, which is about special elections, and when it's filed with the state, you have not less than a hundred and ten and not more than a hundred and twenty-four days following the day that the governor and council declare there shall be a special election, and then there, there does, this is my mistake, there does have to be, if there is the need for a primary, the primary will be held forty-nine days prior to the special election.
Yeah, we just need a timeline.
So, we, we need that. So, Jim has that, if I have the right RSA, and I think I do, Jim has that now. I sent it to him, and...
Thank you.
We can talk about it.
Okay, let's take it up in new business.
All right.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to go into the Libby trustees' meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The first thing I think I want to do is, I'm going to read a letter that we're going to send to the Friends of the Libby, and I think Paul has some follow-up on it. "Wuprow Select Board Acting as Trustees for Libby Museum Plans to Move Forward With Removal of the Libby Museum Collection From the Building Is Stored. Therefore, the Board, the Select Board as Trustees of the Libby Museum Accepts Your Generous Offer to Help With the Removal and Storage of the Libby Museum Collection. Partnership with the Friends, the Board as Trustees Would Like to Discuss the Cost Allocation. Before or as the collection is removed from the museum, the Board of, as, the Board as Trustees Believes It Must Be Appraised. A neutral third-party appraiser who is agreeable in both Select Board as Trustees and the Friends of the Libby Museum would be in the best approach. A fair cost split would show the Attorney General Charitable Trust Division the spirit of cooperation between the two groups." Paul?
So, um, yeah, 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 yeah. So, I'm, I was the person who made the motion a couple of weeks ago that we all voted on, and that motion landed with a thud. That's probably a nice way of putting it. And I'll be very respectful, but also deeply upset, somebody that I have a lot of respect But what that motion did is it drew a very tight focus on the issues around appraisal and the storage of the entire collection at the Libby Museum. Last week, we had the opportunity to meet with town council for some other things around insurance and other items. We collectively reviewed and discussed the letter that both our council received, as well as the Friends' council received, from the Charitable Trust Division, and we discussed the reaction, the thud, as I would call it, that I created and we all supported with the motion. We reaffirmed, and we've always, at least I believe, we've always reaffirmed, that there's two things that are really important right now for the Libby. One is to get the building secured, and two is to get the collection safely and promptly removed. We have a responsibility there, and that's what we continue to reaffirm. The conversation we had with council, the article I read in the Conway Daily Sun just introduced a whole bunch of things around it, which I think, I think we all believed was important to settle, just settle. And we came to an agreement that appraising the entire collection will be done, and we also discussed how to potentially document the removal of the items from the museum. So, what we said to ourselves, my colleagues said, is we need to find middle ground. We need to, we need to kind of get away from the boundaries and get in the middle and sort out the best approach to dealing with the central issue, which is promptly, professionally remove the collection from the building now that we have almost completed the bracing up of the North Wall. We also came to agreement that writing things down, and that's why Mr. Senical read the letter, that writing things down about what, what should take, take place between ourselves and the Friends of the Libby is probably a good thing to do. So, I'm going to make a motion, actually, I'm going to make two. And the first motion, is this where I, I, the first motion is, motion that the Select Board as Trustees of the Libby Museum rescind its unanimous vote based on a motion made by Paul O'Brien at its November fifth meeting that stated, quote, "Using the October fifteen twenty-five collection policy as a guideline, it is recommended that the Libby Trustees' Select Board direct the town manager to notify the Friends of the Libby that the trustees have voted unanimously immediately. To deaccession the collection contents heretofore donated to the Libby Museum by the Friends of the Libby until the collections committee or an executive director is in place, the responsibility shall lie with the town manager or his designee." I'm looking for a second on that motion.
I'll second.
That motion basically backs out what we voted unanimously on two weeks ago. We're un-thudding what we did. So, Mr. Chairman, it's up to you if you want to call for conversation.
Yeah. Anybody want to discuss anything about that motion? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye. And there's a second motion that I'd like to make, and the motion is to accept the Friends of Libby's offer to help with the removal and storage of the Libby collection.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I created a distance between someone I respect, you have my apology.
Does anybody want to speak to the definition of what the Libby collection is now that we've spoken with the...
It's the entirety of the contents of the building.
Correct.
The, the collection is now the entirety of everything that's in that building.
And I'm, I'm glad that the board has agreed unanimously now to get a full appraisal of the entire collection, because we need to know what's there and what needs the most care and what needs to be, you know, looked after. If we have some very, very one-of-a-kind valuable artifacts, those are the ones that we really need to put, I think, the, the biggest care on. Not that we don't worry about things that were Dr. Libby's jewels that he thought were his favorite pieces maybe, but we need to know what we have there. We just need information.
Well, maybe good news and bad news, I don't know. What might be a minor problem, the last four offers that we made was to remove the fragile items. This, I believe I'm hearing correctly, is that the entire contents. Okay, so that message will have to go back to the trustee, to the Friends and to our attorney.
Yep.
Because obviously, your attorneys help straighten this issue out.
Yep.
And it will also have to go, I would imagine, to the Charitable Trust Unit.
Yep.
So, we're meeting the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
And I've sent to Mr. Peneo and yourself that notice. It's public, anybody's welcome, any one of you other selectmen are welcome, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else under the trust? Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to come out of the Libby trustees' meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is there any old business?
Yeah, I have one old business, and this I had put together before all the comments. I went back and I pulled the Board of Selectmen's work plan, and I think we should put it on our next agenda and just review it, so the public knows what it was and how we see ourselves accomplishing those goals.
I think that's right.
So, I had that.
Okay.
One other item under old business, I provided you a copy. Brian had brought up the last time that there were a couple ordinances that we needed to get back into. I have in front of you...
That's right, that's there.
The docs, wharfs ordinance with some of the notes that were taken to it. I also have, because it was discussed, we haven't reviewed this with legal yet, but draft landing licenses for review, because that was one of the asks. I'm not sure if you want to get something scheduled going forward, or wait until after the next meeting to get something scheduled, but I've got this in front of you for consideration to keep this thing, get it back on the rails.
That's good. Okay, any other business?
Yeah, I do. Just a question for all of us. I mean, do we need to just formally, um...
I think so.
Yeah.
Keep going, I had that on mine, so keep going.
I think we just, we formally recommend, and maybe this is for Pat Waterman to sort it out, we formally support the notion of, of calling for a special election if that generate, so I'll just put it there. We formally do that. Can I get a second on that, anything?
And will you add that we get a timeline?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that in the, in the second part, all right.
Okay, I'll second it.
Second it. And then what we probably need to do, maybe is ask our, ask Pat to get us a timeline, to prepare the documents that we have to send, and to ensure that if a primary is required, that we, we get all of that set up, which means noticing the, the people are going to have to come here and, and do the voting. Was that, was that good? Did you miss anything?
Can we get an estimated cost on the whole thing?
So, so this is...
An estimated cost.
Estimated cost.
This is the Select Board notifying Pat that we are recommending a special election to fill the position that was vacated by Glenn Cordelli for...
District three?
I thought, based on what I read, that the letter needs to go to Joe Kennedy, Kenny, because it's the executive counsel who approves the special election. So, we need to send a letter to him.
Right.
And we should have that information about the timeline and the cost, so we have all our information that's in the letter.
I think in addition to the bundle of stuff we just dumped on your, on your plate, one would be the, the construction of a document that we would send to Executive Counselor Kenny ASAP, but Pat's going to have to fill us in with her timeline, her, and an estimate of costs, so we can get all that done, and then just, you know, maybe get it off your desk as quickly as we can. When public input comes, right?
Can I just do my warrant, ask who goes to the letter?
I think Pat could figure that out, or do you?
Oh, okay. Joe Kenny, I have the Secretary of State, and then Joe Kenny, I have the...
Sure. That's, you know, frankly, Bobby, that's great input. Tomorrow, student body left, and I are meeting with the Secretary of State. We'll let him know a letter's coming in his direction. We'll put him on, it's not an official notice, but we'll let him know a letter's coming. Okay, thank you. No, thanks for the heads up.
Town managers' report.
Okay, a couple of items. I sent you some correspondence today that was received from the town of Raymond, New Hampshire. On December second at six thirty PM at their middle school, they're going to be holding a statewide town hall forum, and this is going to be relative to the impacts of some of the zoning reform legislation which has taken place, and the impacts on New Hampshire as a community. It's my understanding that Raymond has a longstanding issue with potable water, and as a result of that, some of these impacts are pretty steep on the town of Raymond, so I'm not sure if the board would like to send representatives to this meeting, or how you'd like to handle it.
I wouldn't mind attending.
I'll, I'll join them.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Good.
I'll get you the relevant information.
Thank you.
For the people to be aware, I think you are aware that there was a culvert replacement that was scheduled to take place this fall on South Main Street between Middleton Road and Oakwood Road, area of Western's corner, with that washout that happened a couple years ago. That got put on hold for a period of time, and now, New Hampshire DOT is planning on holding a public hearing on December tenth in this hall. The plans will be available for inspection at five thirty, with the public hearing to take place at six PM. That's the replacement of that culvert. I believe during the construction process is going to be one-way traffic with lighted controls to allow for that one-way traffic to take place, but that's on December tenth at five thirty, right here in the great hall. We've begun the Budget Committee deliberations. Select Board budget is available in hard copy at the library. It's also available electronically on the webpage. Monday evening, we began with Parks and Recreation, and then on the twentieth, I'll be having a preliminary conversation with them and providing them a draft letter to the DRA regarding the over expenditure. Tax rate, as you heard, we're in the queue for that. Hopefully, by the end of this week or early next week, the tax rate will be set. As Sam said, we're currently just waiting on Department of Education to finish up their work. Mentioned the water main break, Center Street and Mass Landing repairs are taking place tonight, so if you're out on the roads, please be cautious of construction taking place in that area. We held a CIP wrap-up meeting. Just to summarize it, it was determined that there was no need to amend any of the rules or procedures of the CIP committee. There will be a narrative amendment regarding the community center. The engineering costs are scheduled for 2027, with construction to take place in 2028, based on the CIP vote that took place, so there's an editor's note that will take place to correct that. The group felt that we need to do a better job at accounting for engineering costs, when those costs are going to take place, so we're going to work on creating a fillable tab for the year of engineering costs. Also discussed, better definitions for urgency, necessary, desirable, deferible, premature, or inconsistent, and moving forward, the plan next year will be to continue evaluating and scoring three years' worth of projects. Instead of doing ten years' worth of projects, we're only going to do six years of bonded projects for scoring purposes in compliance with state law. And lastly, town hall will be closed November twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth in observance of Thanksgiving, and that's all I have.
Okay, committee reports.
Start. So, I had a final discussion with Bill, the former... So, I had a final discussion with Bill, the former planner, to discuss his exit and what the department should focus on going forward. I had a joint budget meeting with the rest of the board here, I attended the planning board meeting as a citizen, and a waters' meeting on Monday.
Yeah, I have been to Conservation Commission meeting, also have been up to the Libby quite a few times, checking in on the repairs being done, so I have.
Yeah, I attended the Friends of Pop Whalen meeting, I attended the Historical Society meeting, they talked about how to address the issues with the Clark House Foundation, the Schoolhouse Foundation and front wall, these buildings need to be fixed. Last night, Wolfboro, all performers and venues are set, still out there trying to raise funds, the fireworks display will cost $1,000 more. The Libby trustees' meeting, the trustees reviewed their 2025 budget and investment policy. I forgot to bring the statistics, but as in the past, they have just increased. It's running community center activities such as chair yoga, cribbage, manjahn, scrabble, making Christmas ornaments for 7th to 12th grades and for K to 6th grades, and tech help on Tuesday. I went to the Chambers Social, put on by Meredith Village Savings Bank and the Granite State VNA, there was a presentation by both of the organizations, and it was nice to learn more about that. I attended the Chambers monthly board meeting. I went with three of my fellow select board members to the retirement party for Jim Opponis, who was head of the Towns Park and Recreation Maintenance Department, and he definitely will be missed. I attended the CIP wrap-up, and Jim has given a good explanation on that committee. I attended the Wolfboro Waters Committee meeting, the committee is working on an informational sign for mass landing and other water access area signs, and I want to thank the Wetworth Watershed Association for doing a lot of the language work on the mass landing sign and design. There were six members from the public who attended to learn more about Wolfboro Waters so that they can think about whether they want to become a member on the committee or on one of the subcommittees. They discussed a meeting with the Lakes Region Planning Commission to work on a low-impact development around Upper Beach Pond, the town water source, and evaluation of the town zoning ordinance, discussed a possible fix for the Libby parking lot, which will need to be brought to the Board of Selectmen, since based on the MOU with the library, the parking lot is the town's responsibility. Community TV, I attended the monthly community TV board meeting, the new server has arrived, training has been scheduled, the community TV is one of the recipients for the Festival of Trees, so everybody, you should go and attend, and there was a discussion about expanding the board, and that's all I have.
Linda had a light week. I attended the senior lunch the other day, it was wonderful. It was great, I got to eat pie and it was wonderful. Jim, myself and our attorney continue to have conversations with the union, the ambulance side of things, bargaining conversations are ongoing. I, I went on a site visit and attended the planning board last night for a couple of applications that were approved. The planning board began to look at, this is pertinent for Brian and Linda, they began to look at some of the statutes, if that's the right word to use, that our friends in Concord passed that may get undone, so the planning board's in a bit of a twist, trying to figure out, should we modify our RSA, our statute, our regulations, only to prospectively have them get flipped upside down by some folks in Concord, so there, more on that one. It's just burning, it's just burning money, which is a bad thing to do. I also attended with Linda, the retirement party for Jim Opponis, and it is correct, he will be missed. I've attended the Budget Committee meeting, that was the other evening. I visited with the Police Department for their monthly Police Commission meeting. I as well, with John, conducted a exit interview with Bill Scott, and tomorrow, as I've said a couple of times, Brian and I are going to go visit with the Secretary of State and try to get some clarity of what's going on with insurance. That's all I have.
So, I attended the joint budget meeting that we had, and our first Budget Committee meeting, which went well, and they scrutinized the budget very, very closely, and I think we've scrutinized it very closely. I'm working diligently with Paul on school care, the health crisis that we have. For a summary, we've had to pay a 12% increase in the current plan that we have with our employees, and next year, it looks like there's going to be another increase of 26.7%. I actually reached out to Chris Sanunu and got some feedback from him about the healthcare issue, and we're meeting with the Secretary of State tomorrow to see what we can find out about that. And the reason we're meeting with the Secretary of State is because this is under the risk pools, which are groups of towns and schools that all pool their assets together to get better insurance rates, are under the purview of the Secretary of State and a regulator, they're not under the regular Insurance Department Division for the state of New Hampshire. So, it's something that has been posed before, and maybe they will go under a different regulatory body and they'll be better cared for. I met with Phil Holberton about Wolfboro Community TV. I had an EDC meeting that was rescheduled because then it wasn't on the new calendar. For a CIP that I usually attend with Linda, I was in New Jersey visiting my son, who I hadn't seen since August. But, that's where I am.
Jim, anything from the press, are they on?
They are not.
Public input, anybody from the public?
Suzanne Ryan, I'm remiss and naught, John reminded me, our planner, Mr. Scott, I also had a conversation with him, a couple, several conversations with him before he left, and he left us in good stead. He got us everything prepared for our meeting tomorrow night, and he's taken us through to December with the basic information prepared and packets ready to go, so.
Thanks for that, sir.
Credit to his visit here.
Good evening, Susan Bunting, resident of Wolfboro, 40 years.
Jane of Font, latest of late.
I just wanted, I have questions, so quickly, a month ago, the quilters, Jordy, his mom, Jordy Hutcheson's mom, we cleaned up the foliage around the back of the community center, and in doing so, this one ended up in instant care with poison sumac, I had a little myself, but that's all right. The question is, we uncovered a fence that is now really visible, wasn't so visible before, half of it's down, half of it's up, not only is it unsightly, I think it's really a liability and nothing has been done about it, I just don't know, who do you call when you see something like that, that could be a danger?
I will address it with Parks and Rec tomorrow.
Okay, and the second thing is, I'm assuming that fence is there to keep animals or children or people from falling into that big cement pit that's behind there, next to the electric building, that's why the fence is there, but it's down, so something needs to be done. Last Monday, there was no heat, 44 degrees when we went there on Monday, so I left a message with Parks and Rec, and apparently, there was no fuel. It had run out.
That is correct.
Is there not an alarm system or something on that?
There's not, apparently there was an auto delivery that was missed.
Okay.
An auto delivery that was missed.
But you do not have an alarm system on the furnace so that it won't happen again?
I don't think there's a cold alarm in the building, no.
Okay, because I was worried about pipes. Two Mondays before that, the security alarm was activated, we could hear it through the door when we came in, I don't know how long it had been going on, and that required a call, and we got an ambulance showed up, fire engine showed up, police showed up, that's ridiculous, it's a security alarm. What should be done here?
I talked to, I talked to the chief, they're beginning of a meeting here, and he said, I asked him about that, and he said it was a, I think he said a default, power must have gone out of something, it wasn't an alarm to tell anybody that there was a fire, it was just that the thing's not working, so it's beeping constantly, have no idea how long it went, and I said, doesn't somebody check that building, or does the alarm company call anybody, and he said, they're supposed to call somebody, Park and Recs or somebody, somebody was supposed to do something, somebody dropped the ball. But he also said that the alarm company can shut that off through the phone or through, through something, I don't know, the guys came, I was there both times when it went off, it went off on a Tuesday night and it also went off on a Monday morning, and like, we called up both times and the police came, I mean, the firefighters came and shut it off, but something needs to be done, that, who knows how long that was going, they don't know.
So, I'm not sure what alarm was going off, but I know that night security is the one, is the one that's in charge of that building, and I, and I know that Jordy did have a conversation with them about updating the system or something, and that might be part of the renovations, but, so, that's as much as I know.
They're just trying to protect what's still there?
Uh huh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's really it? Yeah. Oh, the police did put in security cameras, good thing, I'm glad they did that, but the other, yeah, there is one more thing, are we the only people using it? No one else is using the community center, and it's, why?
Because you're the only one that wanted to use it.
Really?
She doesn't want the seniors in there?
No, because it's got, it's got.
Well, the asbestos is being removed this Saturday, I understand, so that takes care of the asbestos, what, why would people not want to use it?
Because the, the decision was made that she didn't want to put her seniors in the building, she's taken a position to protect her seniors, you spoke up at the meeting and said that you wanted to go back in the meeting, and that was specifically for you.
How about other people in the community that want to use the building, because I saw on Wolfboro Community Group, some families wanted to have birthday parties there and they were told they couldn't. Is that the way it's going to be, that we're the only ones that can use it?
At this point.
So, you better check what you're cleaning people then, because if you're, you're still paying somebody to clean that building, nobody's been in there for a month, and.
So, I, so this is, this is kind of the controversy here, you know, we've, the town had taken a kind of a position, and Jordy's moving in a different direction, so it seems a little un-understood on what each person is going to do. We, we, we had a process, we were trying to do something, that process has been poked a little bit, you said you want to move into the building to use it, the, these people here agreed with you and allowed you to get into the building. I think maybe what has to happen is you need to coordinate with Jim, the town manager, and say, these are the things that are going on, we need to make sure that these things are arable, and, and go from there, because the, the idea that somebody is doing something, and I think the town doesn't know about it, is not probably the best thing to do, so everybody needs to get on the same page.
Are you saying then that you're denying families?
I'm not denying anybody anything, I'm just.
So, if they call Parks and Recs and someone wants to have a birthday party there, they can?
I think, I think Linda would make the recommendation that they could move, they could go up and use Abernaki or the, or the rooms at the park, because I think that was the discussion.
My understanding, we did not close that facility, so it's open to whatever, but somebody may use it, who wants to use it.
So, if someone wants to rent it, they, they still can?
As long as it goes through Park and Rec, they have a rental fee process, I don't.
I mean, it used to be used, and if it's safe, why can't families continue to use it?
This board did not close that option, okay.
I understand that, but I don't understand why people didn't deny usage of it.
But we also didn't say it was safe either. We didn't.
But you didn't say it was unsafe either.
Could you have the person who wanted to held the event contact me, please?
That would be great, so if people want to use it, they should contact you personally.
Yep.
They should contact Parks and Rec, if they're not getting satisfied with Parks and Rec, contact me.
Thank you, that answers it, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, all right, I'll get on my tiptoes here, I have a big voice anyway, but the seniors are okay with being in town hall, we're, we're, I've talked to them, all, everybody that comes, and we are all in favor of pursuing the renovation, because that's sooner, rather than maybe when we're still not alive, that they'll get a building. But we're satisfied to be at, in the Great Hall here, because then we don't have to move to here, to there, to everywhere else, I mean, we were at Abernaki, and then they thought, well, when we have to leave Abernaki, then they put us over at the ice rink in a, in a little bitty room with no windows, so we're kind of really thrilled, you know, to be here in this one place, nowhere to go, we have parking, so, but we, we do much prefer to have the renovation and have a homier atmosphere, is what the term that people use, but, so we are not, the seniors are not objecting to being here and not being in the community center, because then if work gets done, or, you know, if, when it's going to be torn down or renovations, then we have to go someplace else, and sometimes, you know, you get in the car and you, you're like, where am I supposed to go? Am I going to Abernaki, am I going here, where am I supposed to go? So, we're happy where we are.
Derek Brown, Libby Street. I have a photo here of a location I'd like to share with you guys, that it's down at Foss Field, I was down there walking the dog last weekend, and to best describe the area, it's next to the walking path, there's a little set of bleachers there, as, if you were going to cut across to the pickleball courts. There is what I think, and I could be wrong, a water source for the sprinkler irrigation system, I think it's in a, what is a very old pressure-treated box with a bunch of electrical disconnects on the side of it, I'm not sure if they're live, but the reason I'm bringing it up is it has clearly been rotted for a long time and it's falling in on itself, so I'm going to share this, I'm just going to show you, because you, you'll probably all know where this is, but I just, it needs to be looked at right away.
And can you just email that to me, Derek?
That right there.
Okay, just email me that picture, please.
Sure.
That's a pretty big piece of equipment.
It's about three feet square.
Yeah.
I think it's the irrigation source.
It could very well be.
That's what I think it is.
Could be the lights for the off.
Do we have the education down there?
No, I don't think so.
I think we do.
Thank you.
Maybe it's the controls for the lights.
I had to get the backstop at the tennis court fix.
Hi, Charlene Seibel, I just have a couple of questions and a comment I'd like to make. My first question is, are the preliminary warrant articles on the website, and where?
They are not.
They are not, okay. So, my next question is, let me just, no, okay. My next question is, when will the meeting be to, well, I already found out. Well, I already found out the meeting you're having on Monday, 24 November at 2:00 P.M. And since that's a public meeting, could you tell me where that's going to be located? I know it's a work session.
Right here.
Okay, so it'll be right here in the Great Hall?
Yep.
Okay. And that's at 2:00 next Monday? Correct?
Correct.
And last, but certainly not least, I'm just going to read a brief email that I sent to our Director of Public Works today. "Mr. Randall, it is my understanding that court decisions clarified and enlarged the intent of the scenic road RSAs to include, quote, 'the maintenance of traditional character,' unquote. This means the paving and/or widening of historic scenic Trask Mountain Road is not allowed." And I would urge you, I said in the email, "I'm shocked that Town Council did not inform you of this, and I would respectfully request and urge you to please have a discussion with Town Council before you continue with your proposal to pave historic scenic Trask Mountain Road."
Do you have the name of the case, so we can...
I do not have that information. I could probably get it, but I would also think that Town Council...
Well, I thought if you had it, we could, that's all. We can take care of it. I just thought you might have it.
Yeah, no, I don't happen to have the court cases. This was information I received from another member of North, another resident in North Wolfboro who was very much opposed to the paving of Trask Mountain Road. But I think that before, before you good folks proceed down this path, you really need to have Town Council look into it, because I understand the original RSA concerning, you know, trees and stone walls and whatnot and those restrictions. But my, the information I received today from this resident is that there have been a number of court cases, and the court cases have expanded the scenic road RSAs to include the maintenance of traditional character. Thank you.
So, can you, hold on, Charlene. So is any part of Trask Mountain Road paved?
There is a section that has been paved for quite some time, that commences at Diamond's Corner and stops just shy of the Berkowitzes driveway. And the remainder of the Class 5 road has been unpaved for at least 300 years.
So...
So it's certainly not an emergency.
So yesterday, we had a water, Monday, we had a waters meeting, and at the waters meeting, it was kind of about the time when I received your 91A letter that you had written to Steve, and I think Linda had received the 12 comments from residents that supported the approval to support the paving of Trask Mountain Road, and I think...
I'm sorry, you said 12 residents?
I think that...
But what I did say is, before we started, that all we deal with was water quality. That's why I did not send out those letters. They need to come here to a board that has the ability to deal with roads.
That's not what I'm saying. I just am saying, for the record, that Steve commented that he had received, and you had the 91A request, and you wanted, and I'm talking about that aspect. You had a 91A request. Evidently, there was a dozen or so residents that had supported that. And I was under the impression, when Linda had the letter in her hand, that she had received those comments, because Steve spoke to Linda at the meeting, and then, so I was under the impression. And I was asking whether or not you received those letters.
So to clarify, I have received from Jason Cohen, who's your representative from Block 5. I have received a file. However, I have my dear little Android phone, and I had a lovely 20-minute conversation with Mr. Cohen today, as he had suggested I call if I had any questions or concerns. And because I was unable to access the file he had sent to me, I have not been able to see the emails and communications to which you are referring. Mr. Cohen told me that it's about 100, I think he said, no, 1. The memory was such that it's, it's, I think, the answer to a request I didn't make, because my request was specifically for any and all email, text, telephone, and paper communications from residents on Trask Mountain Road who had contacted Mr. Randall in support of paving Trask Mountain Road. And I believe what was sent to me, which Mr. Penio has kindly offered to do what Mr. Cohen recommended, which was make time for me to come in to an office, and Mr. Cohen recommended that the town provide me with a computer and that someone help me access the files, so that I will be able to actually see the information, the result of that particular part of my 91A. However, what Mr. Randall, as opposed to conveying my actual request, what Mr. Randall conveyed to Mr. Cohen was that I wanted all communications concerning Trask Mountain Road, since Mr. Randall began his employment here, I believe about three years ago, which is not what I asked for. But I will be able to see everything. And Mr. Randall also stated to me in one of the various emails that he had a stack of emails. And now I'm learning for the first time, you have communication from 12 residents?
I don't, I didn't count them.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said somebody said...
No, he must have said, what I said in Wolfboro Waters, they came, and I said, we were not going to discuss it. That's not what Wolfboro Waters is about. It's about water quality.
Right.
We made our statement, and we weren't getting into paving, unpaving on a particular road, that those people were to come here.
Oh, okay, so Mr. Randall presented the information to you, but it was really not germane to what your committee does. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay, and I just want to make sure, in case any of you who were copied on my emails, there are only three homes on the unpaved portion of Trask Mountain Road. There is the Berkowitz home, there's my home, which encompasses about 600 feet of frontage on Trask Mountain Road, and there is the Brown residence at the very end of Trask Mountain Road. So I don't know, I mean, it's hard for me to understand, because I certainly haven't sent you any emails. And he was supposedly, he told me, not supposedly, he told me in one of his emails, that he had communications from the residents of Trask Mountain Road. Now, there's a small portion that's paved, and that's already been paved, but the unpaved 300-year-old portion that has been unpaved for 300 years only has three homes on it. So I am most interested, I can't wait to sit down with Mr. Penio and actually access the files to be able to read these stacks of emails that Mr. Randall said he had.
So there was a, there was a, there was a point that he said that there was a gap. There was asphalt, and then there was a gap, and then there was asphalt.
No, no.
Is that not correct?
That's not correct at all. There's asphalt that goes from Diamond's Corner to just shy of Berkowitzes driveway, and the rest of the 300-year-old road has zero asphalt at all. There is only asphalt on Upper Trask Mountain Road, and that was a new development made several years ago. And it seems to me that a number of the residents of Upper Trask Mountain Road, who moved here from there, and knew when they bought their very expensive homes, that Trask Mountain Road was a gravel road. I'm getting information that a number of residents on Upper Trask Mountain Road have now decided that they want to make here look more like there. And so I think that there is a great ground swell of opposition to that kind of disrespect of our historic areas.
Is Upper Trask Mountain Road a private road or a...
It is. I do not believe it's, I do not believe it's a town road. I'm not aware if they asked, it was originally a private road. I am not aware if they petitioned the town to take over the paving.
They have not.
Okay, so that is still a private paved road. And now, and as I'm saying, now perhaps Berkowitz and Brown sent you emails. I don't know, because I haven't been able to access the files.
I didn't see them.
But Mr. Penio is going to help me. But I just, it seems to me that there are a number of residents who, I've been copying all my emails, who are, who share my concerns and are certainly adamantly opposed to this. And I just, you know, wanted to make sure that I now have information that paving, paving any of, paving and widening any of our scenic roads in Wolfboro could possibly be in violation, and that court decisions have expanded the definition of how scenic roads are supposed to be, are supposed to be considered. And that's all I have. Thank you. See you Monday. Oh, I'll probably see some of you, I'll see some of you tomorrow night at the Public Safety Building. Oh, boy.
Anybody else? You can go for a ride in the fire truck. No.
Charlene, thank you for coming to the Budget Committee meeting and explaining the expense of paving this section of the road, because I think it really is helpful for the Budget Committee to see what's going on and to hear the citizens also. So, yes, Charlene was saying, if you want to join us, our Budget Committee meeting tomorrow is at the Public Safety Building, which also gives you a little purview of the Public Safety Building. So it's two great things. I just wanted to remind the board, I started talking about this earlier, I just wanted to read, read the 10% rule, because I think it's really important when we think about warrant articles and we think about how we're going to draft the warrant this year. In municipalities with budget committees adopted under RSA 3214, the meeting cannot appropriate a total amount which exceeds the total recommended by the budget committee by more than 10%. See RSA 3218 for details of this calculation. The calculation is based on the budget committee's recommended amount on the posted budget from your MS 737, MS 27, or MS 37. If the voted appropriations are over the 10% maximum amount, DRA will disallow on the last voted, first-out basis. Therefore, it is important to consider the order in which warrant articles will be voted. We recommend that priority articles, like the operating budget, be placed towards the beginning of the warrant. The voters can still change the order during town meeting in which the warrant articles are addressed and voted upon. However, long-term funding articles, bonds, notes, must be the first money articles voted on. See RSA 338A for the placement of articles with long-term financing over $100,000. And the reason I'm stressing this again is because I did hear someone say in one of the Select Board meetings that you were considering moving the budget down to get people to vote, and that is a high concern. It's also a concern that some of the stuff that is in our normal budget, our general fund, is, may be pulled out of that general fund to be presented differently, not along with the budget. Caveat to this, if you are going to pull out the enterprise funds, then I think it is time for the POP and the other enterprise funds to absorb their full costs. Meaning, if we have debt on the POP, that is part of the enterprise fund. That is not part of the general fund. So if we can make sure that when we pull this out, we're pulling out everything that has to do with that enterprise fund. And I just wanted to say something about Kevin French, who came up here earlier. I think he was making a really good invalid point, and I love to hear that. You did an exit interview for Bill. I don't think Kevin French got an exit interview. I don't think Jake Ivester got an exit interview. I don't think Justin Chaffee got an exit interview. The Recreation Department has not seen exit interviews for some of their employees. And then when Derek Brown just got up here and pointed out another, even though it's a tiny little building, it's still in that department. So maybe we are not looking at our facilities that are run by that department. We have the Clark House we just talked about, we have the community center. Maybe it's time for, maybe Jim, you can oversee your staff in the Recreation Department and go building to building to building, and all the real responsibilities, so we don't end up in this situation with more little houses for irrigation and other things happening.
I think if you, Suzanne Ryan, if you look at the town report traditionally over the years, the order of which the warrant articles appear are per DRA recommendations, and we're doing it correctly.
That is correct.
The other thing is the 10% rule. The town has not voted that in. We don't have a freezing limit of you can't go over the 10%. It's a special, it's a special vote of the town to do that 10% rule. So I think that's inappropriate information.
One last brief, and again, I'm not as deep-looking into this, but I've been hearing some things that, Charlene, that you mentioned about roads' concerns, and some of the paving in some of the more rural areas of the town, having watched some of it online, Mr. Randall speaking about it, concerned citizens speaking about it, I'm going to bring up one. It's Beach Pond Road. I know it has recently been paved, and I have video from concerned citizens that show the result of recent rainstorms, and how that stormwater has affected the less-than-adequate underpinnings support system for that new pavement, and how it's, Ms. Murray specifically, how it's draining and where that water's going. So I think it should be looked into.
I went up, and I've looked at it. I got a complaint from somebody who lived there. I went up, I looked at it, and I, and I, it has, some of the areas have been fixed and changed. So we did react.
Well, I appreciate that you've looked at it. That's great. But as I understand it, from talking to other people that are well-versed in that field, this is more than just fixing drainage, because it was inadequate materials used versus the materials that were properly governed for such a project. So I think, again, back to some of the statements, including what Bobby just made, I think we need to look at how the materials are being used, who's auditing that the right materials are being used in these projects. I don't think we have the faith that it's being done the way it needs to be done.
Derek, do we have a, do we, I don't have that...
I'd be happy to give it to you. By the way, Brian has those videos...
Oh, Brian has it?
As well does Linda.
Oh, Linda has it?
Yes. They've had them for about three weeks.
Yeah, and they've been forwarded all to the program.
Well, I have more content if people want it. Happy to provide it, Paul.
And when asked at a meeting about the quality of the gravel, we were told that the gravel was certified by a third-party group...
Right.
...to have the right amount of stone and this and that, and everything in it.
Right. And I'm going to ask you, since you bring that up, Brian, who told you that?
I believe Mr. Randall told us at a meeting.
Okay. You have a member in your board that can help advise you on that? I would suggest you utilize him.
I...
He's sitting right across the table from you.
I did go up, and it was not...
Okay, with all due respect, Linda, I understand, but there's the guy right there that could help guide you.
Yeah, but you're pointing, you just pointed me out.
Correct.
And I'm telling you, I went up, and I know what the gravel was, and it was not the right kind of material. It was like it was mud season.
Right.
And I did make a complaint about it. So I did do something about it.
So you realize there's no patch for this, right? You realize that?
They were going to try to find something else to put in there, was my understanding.
Well, that means you've got to somehow magically... Well, that means you've got to somehow magically levitate the asphalt to get it under there. Thank you.
Jim, could you send me a copy of that video that, these videos?
I'll see if I have it.
I'm happy if you already have it.
Just shoot me a copy of it. Thanks. And I'll...
And send me one too, because I didn't see it going under the, under the pavement.
All right.
You have a copy?
Nobody else wants to...
Could you send it to Jim?
Discuss anything?
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to go in non-public.
Second.
All who are in favor?
Aye.